May we request MP Abdul Wahab Pak to please lead us in vocation.
Allahumma salli wasallim ala sayyidin amhamad. Wa ala alihi wa shahbiyyatim a'yni. Robbana zulmana anfusana wailam tagfir lana wa tarhamnala kuna min xashri. Robbana innana samiina munadi yunadi lil imani an aminu birabiin fa amanna. Robbana faghfir lana fa innaka anta wul gathur rahim. Warhamna fa innaka khir rahim. Allahumma la tadaalana zamban ti hazal muk'am illa ghafarka. Wala maridan illa shafa'in. Wala maridan illa shafayta. Wala hamman wala ghaman illa farriqta. Wala deinan illa qadayta. Wala hajatan min hawaajina fi hazal hayaa illa antana ala qaday. Allahumma innas ala ta'antu ajsana wa ta'ansar muslimina fi kuli makan. Want to only be fatih kalimat al haqti waddin. Want tashmalabi inayitika warri'aitika wa himaitika ikhwan mujahidna fi kuli makan. Allahumma nsur ikhwan mujahidna fi Palestine. Allahumma nsur ikhwan mujahidna fi Palestine wa fi Gaza. Allahumma aktublah muttaufika wa nassr. Wal putuhaat fi kuli ma'rakatin khaduha ya robbal. Rabbana faghaliina sabra. Wasabid akdamaana. Want sur na alakumil kafirina walhamdulillah.
What is the pleasure of the floor leader?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu. Before I tell the plenary my pleasure, I want to greet everyone. Good afternoon. And a blessed Thursday to everyone. With that, honorable presiding officer Don Mustafa Arbizon Loong, I move for the amendment of business to include the first, the second reading of Parliament Bills Number 407 and 408. And later on, for the referals of the same, together with Parliament Bill 403, all pertaining to districting bill. Likewise, to amend for the purpose of the budget bill later on to be tackled also. Thank you.
There's a motion from the floor to amend the order of business to include Parliament Bill 404 and 407. Is that correct, floor leader?
Yes, exactly.
407, 40...
407 and 408.
408, as well as...
And now later on, 403.
And 403.
All three distincting bills will be referred to the committee later on. And finally, the budget bill to be filed and read later on.
So there's a motion from the floor to include Parliament Bill 404, 407, and 408 in the order of business, as well as the Parliament Bill regarding the budget appropriations of the Bangsamoro government. Is there any second? Any objection? Hearing none. The chair hereby approves.
Thank you, honorable presiding officer Deputy Speaker Loong. At this point, moving to recognize MP Sheikh Said to read the sponsorship speech for Parliament Bill Number 407.
MP Sheikh Said is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Subhanakallail malana illa ma'al amtana innaka anta al ali mul hakim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My cortisian respect to honorable Chief Minister Abdurrahman Makakuwa. Honorable speaker, Ustad Dr. Muhammad Swaeib, floor leader, Brother Jan Anthony Lim, and distinguished members of the parliament, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, my cortisias to all. I speak on behalf of my colleagues who, like myself, have submitted proposals for the creation of new districts, a vital step toward another milestone in the Bangsamoro peace process, establishment of the Bangsamoro regular government as mandated by the Bangsamoro Organic Law, BOL, together with my co-authors, senior official of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, Jabhat Akhrir Murwal Islami, and other IMILIP-nominated members of parliament. This representation has the honor to present before this august body the proposed endorsement by the Central Committee of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, taking off from the Supreme Court decision declaring Bangsamoro Autonomy Act Number 77 unconstitutional, and its pronouncement on the need for a new law, considering that BAA Number 58 can no longer be applied since the province of Sulu is no longer part of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region. We now present Bangsamoro Parliament Bill Number 407. This bill is our faithful response to the court ruling, ensuring that the redistricting process is constitutionally sound and technically and procedurally compliant. Bangsamoro Parliament Number 407 reapportioned the seven seats originally located to Sulu, thereby increasing the district seats of the remaining provinces. The proposed total now stand at thirty-two parliamentary districts distributed as phallos. Basilan for district. Lanau del Sur including Marawi City, nine districts, with Marawi City divided into the first Anshikan Parliamentary District. Magindano del Norte, five district. Magindano del Sur, five district. Tawi Tawi, four district. Kota Batu City, three district. Special Geographic Area is GE, two district. In undertaking this reapportionment, we consider two key factors: population and geographical location. For population, we ensure that each district meets the minimum requirement of 100,000 residents under the Bol. This guarantees adequate representation in parliament so that local concern can be properly addressed through legislation or executive action. For geographical location and to avoid the remindering, we made certain that the municipalities composing its district are compact and contiguous as likewise required by the Bol. There is one exception in Magindano del Norte, where two pairs of municipalities are grouped together despite being separated by a larger municipality. This configuration was necessary to meet the population requirement and to maintain the province's rightful representation. Section 10, Article 7 of the Bol allows flexibility by stating that contingency shall apply as far as practicable. Thus, this exception is justified by practicality and fairness, not by political interest. For all other provinces, cities, and the special geographic area, the requirements of contingency has been strictly observed. This bill abwithed the faithful as BAA Number 77, ensuring that all districts, particularly in Lanau del Sur and Kota Batu City, are composed of contiguous, compact, and adjacent areas. My colleague in the parliament, we trust that you will recognize the merits of our proposal and that, together with the other pending bills, we may deliberate on it with the best interest of the Bangsamoro region and its people in mind. We place utmost importance on ensuring adequate representation, a logical and equitable grouping of local government units per district, and ultimately, the strengthening of our parliament as a truly democratic venue for decision-making and government in the Bangsamoro. This Bill Number 407 is more responsive to the call na maging to district ang Marawi City, given its population na more than 200,000, more than 200,000, and will address the issues in Kapai and other municipalities. Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. Alhamdulillah. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Floor leader.
Thank you, honorable MP Sheikh Said. Before I move for the referral of this particular bill, I move to recognize the honorable Romeo K. Semma to read the sponsorship speech for Parliament Bill Number 408, also on districting.
MP Romeo Semma is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Our honorable speaker, Dr. Muhammad Jakub. The proreader, Anthony Jan Lim, for the honorable presiding chair. Honorable colleagues in the Bangsamoro parliament, ladies and gentlemen. It is my honor and responsibility to stand before this chamber to sponsor the proposed Bangsamoro Parliament District Act of 2025. This proposed measure fulfills the mandate of Section 10, Article 7 of the Bangsamoro Organic Law, that the Bangsamoro parliament shall be composed of members elected from single-member parliament district, ensuring equitable representation for our people in accordance with the principles of continuity, compactness, and population equality. Beyond its legal basis, this measure is a clear manifestation of the Bangsamoro right to serve determination. I rightfully earn through decades of collective struggle and sustain through good governance. This bill is led by MNLEF members of the MNLEF in partnership with our fellow members of the parliament and institutions, reflecting our continuing participation in building the foundations of the Bangsamoro government. We do not claim source credit for its making, but we humbly take part in ensuring that the vision for which many have struggled is realized through peaceful and democratic means. Recent development in law and jurisprudence compel us to act with both urgency and prudence. The Supreme Court rulings in problems of Sulu versus Angela Padella and Lananti Ali permission on election have rendered previous restricting law no longer consistent with constitutional and territorial realities. In the said case, the High Court explicitly directed this parliament to reconstitute and enact a new districting law before October 30, 2025. We are thus duty-bound, both legally and morally, to comply with this directive and ensure that the first regular parliament election proceed in accordance with the 1987 Philippine Constitution, the Bangsamoro Organic Law, and the rule of law. This proposed act creates thirty-two single-member parliamentary districts across the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region, covering Basilan, Lanau del Sur, Magindano del Norte, Magindano del Sur, Tawi Tawi, Kota Batu City, and the special geographic areas. Each district represents, as far as practicable, contiguous, compact, and adjacent territories with a population of not less than 100,000. This districting is the result of careful study, thorough deliberation, and fair consideration. It is non-partisan and non-political in nature, designed to promote balance, equity, and inclusivity. Every decision made in drawing these districts was guided by the principles of justice, proportionality, and good governance. We also recognize the vital role of the Commission on Election in ensuring that this act is implemented with integrity and transparency. Comitecks are oversee and operationalize this measure, guaranteeing that the first regular parliamentary elections in the Bangsamoro are conducted freely, readily, and credibly. Through this act, Mr. Speaker, we seek not merely to comply with legal requirements, but to uphold the bearish spirit and representations and democracy that anchors the Bangsamoro parliament. The creations of equitable districts is essential to ensuring that every voice in our region, from the highlands of Lanau to the islands of Tawi Tawi, is heard, valued, and represented. This act serves as a cornerstone of our readiness for the first regular parliamentary election and as a testament to our collective commitment to the moral governance, justice, and inclusivity. In enacting this measure, Mr. Speaker, we affirm our solemn duty to safeguard the legitimacy and integrity of the democratic process in the Bangsamoro, always guided by the rule of law and the will of our people. Wa bilai topic walidaya. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Floor leader.
Thank you, honorable presiding officer. Thank you, honorable Kaka Romeo Semma. With that, honorable presiding officer, I move that Parliament Bill Number 403, which was also read on second reading last Wednesday, last Tuesday, and Parliament Bill Number 407 and 408 be referred to the Committee on Rules as well as to the Committee on Local Government.
There is a motion on the floor to refer Parliament Bills 403, 407, and 408 to the Committee on Rules and to the Committee on Local Government. Is there a second? Any objections? Chair hears none. The same is hereby approved. Chair here is none. The same is hereby approved.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. At this point, I move that we continue with the interpolations that was postponed or suspended yesterday on the Parliament Bill creating the Bangsamoro Labor and Employment Code. May I therefore move...
One minute suspension.
One minute suspension.
Tim, floor leader.
Honorable Presiding Officer, respectfully moving that the Honorable Committee Chairman of Committee on Labor and Employment, the Honorable Alan P. Pagayo be recognized to continue with the interpolations and likewise Deputy Floor Leader, Deputy Speaker Don Mustafa Arbison Loong be recognized as well to continue with this interpolation.
Alan Pagayo, MP Alan Pagayo is recognized to continuously answer any interpolation. The honorable gentleman from Tawi-Tawi, Sulu, and Cotabato, the Honorable Don Loong is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To continue, I will be reserving the right to propose amendments as regards the employment transition assistance in the proper time. So I will move to the next aspects of my interpolation. Regarding the provision in the proposed law allowing for employees to who have rendered at least two years, regardless of employment status, avail of a leave without pay for more than 30 days to undergo the pilgrimage leave. May we be clarified if what were the general comments of private companies as regards this in terms of acceptability and feasibility? To elaborate further, I am worried as regards to safety nets so that there will be provisions such as notice period for employees to provide their employers leave time because of course one month of leave in a private company can have impact in the operations and as well as other aspects to make this more feasible in the Bangsamoro government.
Mr. Speaker, during the consultation with concerned sectors, the committee have not received any position paper or comment for that purpose?
Mr. Speaker, is there a limit as to how many times the private employee can apply for the pilgrimage leave? Within five years, can he do it consecutively every year? Or what is the provision as regards this?
Mr. Speaker, the entitlement of the pilgrimage leave is only one time? One time.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Can we also be clarified about this provision, Section 156, right to disconnect where a lot of supervisors are guilty with this? Guidelines on after-work are use of technology. So are there existing guidelines already that is relevant to Section 156?
Mr. Speaker, can I be allowed to read the full text of the section referred to by the...
Proceed.
Section 156, right to disconnect guidelines on after-work hours use of technology. An employee shall not be reprimanded, punished, or otherwise subjected to disciplinary actions if he or she disregards a work-related communication sent after work hour. For this purpose, every employer shall issue guidelines on when employees are not compelled to send or answer work-related...
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt. The session is suspended for one minute. We welcome the arrival... And resume.
Honorable Presiding Officer, at this juncture, I move that we defer first the interpolation of the Bangsamoro Labor Employment Code and at this point, move to recognize the...
There is a motion to defer further interpolation of the subject matter on the labor code and duly seconded. Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Same is here by approve.
Floor leader.
At this point, Honorable Presiding Officer, I move that the Honorable Chief Minister be recognized to allow him to deliver his budget message for the plenary.
The parliament is honored. The party parliament is honored to welcome our chief minister and receive the budget message. May we hear from you, Sir Chief Minister, sir? Dito sa taas siguro? Dito po sa taas? The session suspended.
Thank you.
Motion is resumed. So it's my honor to invite our chief minister, Abdurrahman Makakuat, to deliver his budget message.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bismillah, rohmanir rohim. Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. First of all, I would like to commend the hard work of the Bangsa-Moro government over the nearly seven years of transition period from armed to warm government. Indeed, the process has been challenging. We have encountered many setbacks politically, economically, socially, and even geographically. All those challenges, we have made it to the point as one Bangsa-Moro. Our resilience and determination become our very weapon in facing the issues, complications, and difficulties in our journey. As the transition period approaches its end, we remain resilient in continuing what we have started and becoming the better government we have always aspired to be. Highlighting moral governance as a core of our political values. In the coming of regular government, we hope to continue working together as we have in previous years and challenge ourselves to be our best so we can provide our people the government they truly deserve. May we not forget our main goal, the reason why we fought for our freedom and identity as one autonomous government. For the next few years, I hope the Bangsa-Moro government continues its process and becomes a model of government that is sustainable, accessible, and mindful of its people. As we continue to realize our vision, I have the honor to present to this honorable parliament the budget for fiscal year 2026 amounting to 114.7 billion. The total consists of 38.16 billion for personal services, 40.62 billion for maintenance and other operating expenses, and 35.29 billion for capital outlet. Through this budget, we aim to support the various programs implemented by ministries, offices, and agencies designed to strengthen and advance the development of the Bangsa-Moro land. Here is the statistics. The Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region has historically exhibited low-income performance having long-paced, deep-rooted challenges. This situation largely stems from the years of armed conflict and persistent security issues including family feuds and other form of unrest which have hindered sustained growth and development in the region. However, as we continue to safeguard our gains and pursue inclusive growth, we are seeing decline in poverty. The poverty incident rate fell to 28% in 2021, down from 72.6% in 2018, a major drop valuing the establishment of our government. A further decrease to 23.5% was reported in 2023, reflecting the region's steady progress. Stakeholders have expressed appreciation for the continued financial logistic support, recognizing as a key driver of productivity. We view this intervention as investment in our people. When you equip communities with means to thrive, you left them out of poverty. Our economy grew from 20%, 20.70% in 2024, with the construction sectors amounting for 26%. Professional and commercial services for 12.7%. Human health and social work for 10.9%. Mining and quarrying for 8.7%. And agriculture, forestry, and fishing for 4.2%.
BARMM builds momentum for recovery. Resilient economy gears up for stronger growth in 2025. The Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, BARMM, demonstrated economic resilience in 2024, maintaining positive growth despite a complex global and domestic environment. According to the Philippine Statistics Authority, PSA, the region's gross regional domestic product, GRDP, grew by 2.7%, reflecting both short-term adjustments and emerging opportunities as BARMM transitions toward a more investment-driven development model. Supply side. Strong foundation. Emerging growth drivers. BARMM's economy continued to be anchored in three key sectors: agriculture, forestry, and fishing, AFF, laying the groundwork for renewal. Accounting for 32.5% of the region's output, AFF faced temporary headwinds, contracting by 4.2% due to climate-related challenges. However, strategic investments in breeding stocks and orchard development show a commitment to long-term agricultural modernization and sustainability. Industry. Construction boom sparks growth. The industry sector grew by a robust 8.7%, now contributing 25.6% to the economy. Growth was driven by vigorous public infrastructure development and rising private construction activity, demonstrating BARMM's growing capacity for capital formation and productive investments. Services. Leading the economic transition, the services sector, BARMM's largest at 42.1% of GRDP, grew by 5.1%. Fueled by wholesale and retail trade and public administration, the sector's expansion reflects rising domestic demand, stronger governance, and improved public service delivery. Demand and investment. Building the region's future. The Gross Capital Formation, GCF, contributed 1.6 percentage points to overall growth, highlighting the region's proactive investment in infrastructure and agribusiness development. These investments align with regional priorities in food security, climate resilience, and rural enterprise. Household spending stabilizing, while household final consumption expenditure, HFCE, grew at a slower pace due to price pressures. Moderating inflation is expected to unlock stronger consumer demand in 2025. Labor market. High employment. Growing participation. BARMM maintained a high employment rate of 96.7% in 2024 with job gains in agriculture, construction, and services. This signals broad-based economic activity and an engaged labor force. However, tackling underemployment through skills development and quality job creation remains a top policy priority, an opportunity for BARMM to empower its growing workforce. Inflation. Easing towards stability. Inflation averaged 4.0% in 2024, influenced mainly by food and transport costs. Encouragingly, price pressures showed signs of easing toward year-end. This creates an enabling environment for increased household spending, investment planning, and macroeconomic stability going into 2025. 2025 outlook. Poised for rebound and inclusive growth. BARMM is projected to grow by 4.5% in 2025, supported by continued infrastructure development from both public and private sectors. Agricultural modernization and the adoption of climate-resilient practices. Sustained growth in services led by trade and governance. Stable inflation supporting consumer confidence. Policy reforms, investment facilitation, and local government collaboration. Resilient today, ready for tomorrow. While 2024 was a year of adjustment, BARMM's economy remained firmly in positive territory, reflecting its underlying resilience and policy momentum. With targeted investments, sectoral reforms, and a supportive macroeconomic environment, BARMM is well positioned for a stronger, more inclusive growth path in 2025, continuing its journey as a vibrant and maturing regional economy.
Despite all this, our basic literacy rate ranked the lowest compared to other regions, emphasizing our needs to elevate our school system accordingly. 14.4% of our students' aids, pipe, and above are unable to read or write. That is why the Bangsa-Moro government allotted a substantial amount to our education to recognize and consider its importance to the overall development of our region. Education has always been close to our hearts because we know that progress begins with empowering our people. That's why when we speak of education, we speak of the future for the Bangsa-Moro. It is not only a fundamental right, but also our bridge to peace, progress, and empowerment. Today, we are sustaining the progress of our reforms, advancing new opportunities, and maintaining our commitment to ensure that every generation benefits from quality education. Recognizing this, the Bangsa-Moro government has placed education among its top priorities for 2026 through improved quality education in the Bangsa-Moro land with an allocation of 1.6 billion. We'll continue to enhance the quality of teaching and learning by providing learners' kits, teachers' kits, amshers for learners, and learning textbooks for both basic and madarish education. We have also allocated 2.03 billion for school best management operation, providing the necessary MOOe to sustain the regular operations and school divisions across the farm. Likewise, to ensure that no children lynch on empty stomach, the school best feeding program will provide with 750... the school best feeding program will provide with seven hundred fifty-six point nine billion. To further expand access to quality education and promote academic excellence, we will continue to strengthen our scholarship initiative by allowing two hundred seventy-seven point four million for the highly specialized courses given by the Ministry of Science and Technology, covering undergraduate assistance through base and best merit, advanced study grant for professionals, international graduate studies, and special assistance program in the science and technology. In line with this, four hundred seventy-four point seven million is allocated for the Bangsamoro Scholarship Program, BSPBT, to address skills, needs through community and institution best learning, and to promote employment and entrepreneurship in the region. In addition, the access to higher and modern education scholarship program with allocation of four hundred thirty-two point one million will continue to provide opportunities for the serving youth to pursue higher education, aiming to support five thousand three hundred seventy-five gratis. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, the budget reflects an increase in the monthly education systems from six thousand to eight thousand to further strengthen our support to students. Meanwhile, the Madaris Asatis Program with the allocation of one point three billion will support six thousand six hundred twenty-seven asatis in twenty-twenty-six, advancing an integrated education anchored on Islamic principles and values to nurture lifelong learners and responsible members of the community. Furthermore, one hundred thirty-three point four million will be allocated for the Angat Bangsamoro Kabataan Tungus Sakarunungan. This allocation shall cover two thousand educational assistance for eleven thousand nine hundred seven Lina students, three thousand for eleven thousand five hundred thirty-one high school students, and ten thousand for seven hundred five, seven thousand five hundred college students, thereby supporting underprivileged yet deserving learners in reaching their full potentials. These programs are more than just numbers. They represent our promise to every Bangsamoro child that education will serve as both their shield against poverty and their foundation for success. For Allah, the exalted remind us in the Quran, "Allah will rest those who believe and those who were given knowledge by the grace." Surah Al-Mujaddila, fifty-one, fifty-eight, eleven.
Honorable Presiding Officers, Honorable Speaker, at this point, may I move to recognize the Honorable Minister of MFPM, Honorable MP Bydex Pakasem to read as well his budget message.
Honorable MP Obayda Pakasem, you are recognized. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. To continue, the message of the Chief Minister, Mr. Speaker, and honorable members of this august body. In our desire to enhance the economic future of our region, we recognize also the importance of healthcare as we believe that at the core of every Bangsamoro family lies a desire for a healthier, longer, and more dignified life. For the past years, our region has faced many setbacks in our healthcare services due to gaps in availability and accessibility of quality healthcare, particularly for women and children. Many healthcare facilities within the region are operating with limited resources, including personnel, which affects the overall accessibility of services offered. As such, in twenty-twenty-six, we will maintain and strengthen the health initiatives to ensure that quality healthcare is regarded not just as a service to the people, but as a right for everyone. In line with this vision, we reinforce our commitment to sustain healthcare by making it more sustainable, accessible, and meaningful to our communities. We persist in supporting and enhancing the Bangsamoro Health Workers Program, which still serves as the bedrock of our community-centered healthcare system. This twenty-twenty-six, we are allocating six hundred nineteen point two million to provide six thousand monthly financial assistance to eight thousand six hundred barangay health workers who consistently serve as the reliable first point of contact for health support in their communities. Mr. Speaker, their dedication ensures that every family has equitable access to essential health services. To counter the worry of most Bangsamoro patients, the Medical Assistance Program under the Office of the Chief Minister shall continue to support and sustain the Ayudang Medical Mula Sa Bangsamoro Government, or AMBAG, program with four hundred eighty-nine point six million budget allocation to broaden its reach and provide hope and support, especially to numerous underprivileged and/or indigent families. To uphold access to healthcare services in every community, we continue to support one of our flagship programs, the Tiyakap Bangsamoro Kalusugan Program, with a fund of two hundred nine million to sustain one hundred thirty-seven rural health units and one thousand sixty barangay health stations operation across the autonomous region. This ensures that health facilities and infrastructures are not only present, but also functional, properly equipped, focused, and responsive to the needs of our communities. In addition, Mr. Speaker, the nutrition program will be strengthened with fifty-two point eight million allocation to address malnutrition through the reinforcement of feeding initiatives and micronutrient supplements for children and expectant mothers. Alongside this, hundred thirty-five point five million will fund the Bangsamoro Immunization Program to be able to sustain the protection of our community by ensuring that every child receives a full immunization against preventable diseases. Throughout these efforts, our fundamental belief is clear: healthcare is not a privilege, but an essential right of every Bangsamoro. By means of these efforts, Mr. Speaker, we are not only saving lives, but also fostering healthier, more resilient, and more hopeful communities for generations to come. True progress is not measured by economic gains or in any built infrastructure. It is also how we care for and uplift the vulnerable ones, the marginalized sector, the elderly persons with disabilities, indigenous people, the poor, and those affected by disasters and conflicts. Consistently, we will continue to sustain and strengthen programs that uphold the well-being of every Bangsamoro. For this reason, we have included programs, activities, and projects to guarantee the provision of social services and social protection to those who require and need it, particularly individuals from the most at-risk and marginalized groups within the autonomous region. As such, the Unlad Pamilyang Bangsamoro Program with two hundred eighty-two point nine million continues to aid uplift the poorest and vulnerable households by providing rice subsidies, livelihood, and startup capital. With this, we hope, Mr. Speaker, we can empower them in building sustainable sources of income that can give them renewed hope of the future. We also advance the welfare of our senior citizens, who serve as pillars of our history and wisdom, by providing them eyecheckups and eyeglasses, assistive devices and healthcare packages funded at thirty-three point one million. Along with this, we prioritize programs for persons with disabilities with a fund of five hundred sixty-eight point one million for financial assistance, assistive devices, and healthcare packages. This reflects our belief that disability should never mean disadvantage to the Bangsamoro. Likewise, the KUPKUP program is backed by a total fund of one hundred thirty-six point eight million to provide financial assistance to orphaned children and extends its support through subsidies and assistance to seventy-four marcas or turiles. In addition to this, Mr. Speaker, the augmentation of honorarium for daycare workers and supervised neighborhood play workers is funded at one hundred eighty-six point four million to provide six thousand monthly assistance to two thousand five hundred ninety daycare workers and supervised neighborhood play workers. The Ministry of Social Services and Development is likewise prioritizing programs for our Samar Bajau communities. The Layag Bajau Program will still be sustained with a budget of thirty-one point eight million, affirming our dedication and commitment to social inclusion and improved quality of life. Mr. Speaker, honorable members of this body, our vision may seem simple, but it is significant, but its significance is profound. A Bangsamoro where the vulnerable are protected and empowered, the marginalized are seen and uplifted, and the disadvantaged are not silenced. Rather, our collective effort transforms into realized and triumphant actions. Through strengthening assistance for the marginalized, we are bringing compassion to life in a tangible and sustainable manner. Bearing this in mind, we also place the highest priority on the safety and well-being of the Bangsamoro, especially in times of major setbacks and unforeseen disasters, where resilience becomes essential to minimize downtime, reduce losses, and quickly restore normalcy. To demonstrate this commitment, the Lingkod Pamayanan Para Sa Kapayapaan Project provides monthly subsidies to para social workers who are community members trained to support social work services. They are familiar with the culture, language, and everyday life of the people in their area. This makes them effective in understanding and responding to community needs during calamities. Recognizing their crucial role as frontliners of relief and recovery, we have allocated a total budget of one hundred eighty-nine million to sustain the program, while also increasing their monthly assistance from four thousand to six thousand. A clear affirmation of our dedication to strengthening disaster response, empowering communities, and ensuring that no one is left behind even in times of crises. Moreover, four hundred fifty million has been allocated to the Bangsamoro Cares for the Critical Assistance and Response to Emergency Situations Program. This initiative will provide cash assistance, hospitalization support, medicines, assistive devices, bural aid, and other essential services to thirty thousand indigent and disadvantaged individuals and families facing personal crises. Our efforts consistently translate into improving the life condition of our people, the creation of opportunities, and the accessibility of various forms of assistance, enabling us to live progressively in the years to come under our autonomous government. In this regard, Mr. Speaker, we continue to invest in programs that advance our promised development. From our experience during the devastating El Nino phenomenon of twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, which slowed economic growth from four percent in twenty-twenty-three to just two point seven percent in twenty-twenty-four, we remain steadfast in implemented supportive projects and programs. Despite the threat of similar calamities, our government remains optimistic with a projected economic growth at four point five percent in twenty-twenty-five and four point seven percent in twenty-twenty-six. The twenty-twenty-six budget, Mr. Speaker, is designed to support this upward trajectory with an estimated gross regional domestic product of three hundred twenty-seven point seven billion. BARM's economy emphasizes three key sectors: agriculture, services, and industry. Recognizing agriculture's central role in regional development, our government continues to support the flagship programs of the Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries, and Agrarian Reform, particularly the pursuit of stabilized agricultural means to ensure sustained economic growth. Over the past few years, Basic Integration for Harmonized Intervention, or BINHE, program has emerged as one of the most prominent initiatives of the Bangsamoro government, aiming to help farmers increase their production in income. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, BARM has allocated four hundred sixty-two point one million to this program, eighteen percent higher than its twenty-twenty-five budget. Through this initiative, we aim to distribute palae seeds to twenty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-four farmers, complete fertilizer packages to one thousand two hundred fifty farmers, and corn seeds to twenty thousand seven hundred twenty-six, among other inputs. We are also providing machinery and post-harvest equipment to support various agricultural activities, including livestock and poultry production, as well as organic farming. In addition, Mr. Speaker, infrastructure support will be made available for rice, corn, cassava, and other high-value crops. These interventions will be distributed to various farmer cooperatives and associations. Furthermore, our land acquisition and development for the upliftment of poor agrarian reform beneficiaries, or the LUPA program, which seeks to transform landless farmers into small landowners, has been allocated hundred seven point five million in the twenty-twenty-six fiscal budget. This ensures that farmers have access to their own land, enabling them to produce agricultural goods and improve their livelihood. Given agriculture's importance, Mr. Speaker, the role of farmers remains vital to our region's economic growth. For our fisherfolk, the Integrated and Sustainable Development for Aqua Culture Capture, or ISDA, program continues to provide essential inputs. This program has been a highlight of MAFAR's efforts with a budget of hundred forty-one million in twenty-twenty-five and two hundred forty million in twenty-twenty-six. A total of six hundred fifty-five fisherfolk will receive fish seeds, while two hundred five thousand seaweed growers will benefit from the provision of seaweed seedlings. In addition, Mr. Speaker, five hundred thirteen fisheries post-harvest equipment and machinery will be distributed along with other essential support. In recognition of the importance of food security and agricultural productivity in the region, the Bangsamoro Agriculture and Fisheries Training Institute was established to advance training in courses in agriculture, in fisheries, and modern trends for our hard-working farmers and fisherfolk. With a total of initial fourteen training programs and activities offered for the four hundred twenty farmers and fisherfolk, we have allocated a substantial amount to BAFTI. The service sector remains the largest contributor to BARM's economy. Labor market growth is promising, driven by infrastructure and agribusiness projects, the expansion of MSMEs and investments in human capital through education and training. Meanwhile, the industry sector continues to perform well through infrastructure development. We have significantly increased funding for the Bangsamoro Economic Zone Development Programs to be implemented by MTIT from forty-three point seven million in twenty-twenty-five to three hundred seventeen point seven million in twenty-twenty-six. The major increase is due to the allotted two hundred twenty million for the dredging and reclamation project at Pollok Freeport and Economic Zone. This project is essential for accommodating larger cargo ships and tankers, which are critical to the region's trade and economic activities. Additionally, the Bangsamoro Integrated Livelihood Program has been allocated with nineteen point five million to support poor and marginalized workers. This program provides startup capital to organize rural workers, enabling them to establish micro, small, and medium enterprises, or MSMEs, and generate employment within their communities. Household consumption expenditure reached three hundred forty-five point two billion in twenty-twenty-four, and an increased number of four twenty-twenty-five is observed. We are working to increase this figure in twenty-twenty-six and beyond, driven by improved employment conditions and inclusive economic growth. Mr. Speaker, to continue the pursuit of sustainable advancement in the region, the Ministry of Public Works the Ministry of Public Works continues to implement key infrastructure programs designed to improve the socioeconomic conditions of the people. One of the ministry's flagship initiatives is the Road and Bridge Development Program, which has been allocated a total budget of three point one billion with a target of one hundred twenty. This program strives to improve regional connectivity and facilitate the movement of goods and people, and stimulate local economies, particularly in geographically isolated and disadvantaged areas. Complementing this effort is the Water System Development Program totaling to one hundred twenty-one million, aimed at constructing twenty-two water systems, which strives to address the longstanding issue of inadequate water supply in remote communities. By expanding access to safe and potable water, the program aims to improve the overall quality of life for residents across the autonomous region. Moreover, in recognition of the increasing frequency and severity of natural disasters, the ministry has established MENDRE, to be Particular Natural Disaster Management Program, with a total allocation of nine hundred sixty-three point seven million, targeting certain facilities and drainage systems and ten shore or slope protections. This is still under the MPW. This initiative is designed to enhance the region's stability through strategic infrastructure planning and emergency response capabilities, thereby safeguarding communities and public assets from the unfavorable impacts of calamities. Access to decent housing is a basic human right that must be upheld for every Bangsamoro to foster peace and security and prosperity as well in the region. The Development Assistance on Resettlement Towards Unity Support Sustainability Accessibility Livelihood Accountability and Moral Governance, or the RUSALAM program, under the Ministry of Human Settlement and Development, is a flagship resettlement initiative with a total allocation of six hundred twenty-one million, targeting the provision of three hundred fifty housing units. It aims to deliver sustainable and resilient housing solutions for disadvantaged and homeless Bangsamoro communities, particularly internally displaced persons and families affected by conflict. These programs reflect the Bangsamoro government's unwavering commitment to building resilient, equitable, and prosperous communities and form a critical part of our broader development agenda. Building on our efforts to improve improve public health and quality of life, we also recognize environmental preservation. The Conservation and Management Program, including the Integrated Bangsamoro Greening Program, or IBGP, will be provided with one hundred sixty-eight point eight million to sustain its focus on large-scale repforestation and ecological restoration. Furthermore, we remain steadfast in our commitment to the Energy Development and Management Program, which has been allocated funds to ensure the development of sustainable and renewable energy sources, as well as to increase regional revenue through sustainable energy initiatives. These programs help mitigate the risk of natural disasters, particularly within vulnerable communities across BARM, while also advancing our broader goals of peace-building, biodiversity, conservation, and environmental sustainability. Complementing this, Mister Speaker, the Ministry of Labor Employment, or MOLI, focuses on generating gainful employment opportunities and enhancing workforce skills, which are vital for achieving inclusive and sustainable economic growth. Several key programs have been funded to support this mission. The Bangsamoro Internship Development Program has been allocated ninety-eight point three million, intending to provide two thousand five hundred young workers opportunities to demonstrate their talents and skills in the field of public service, preparing them for future employment. Additionally, the Special Program for Employment of Students, or SPESS, with a budget of fourteen point seven million, aims to support three thousand one hundred fifty in-school and out-of-school youth. This program provides temporary employment opportunities during summer or throughout the year, helping students earn an income to support their education. The Bangsamoro Tupad Program, or Tulung Panghanap Buhay Para Sa Ating Disadvantaged or Displaced Workers, has been allocated eleven point seven million to offer temporary employment to two thousand informal sector workers, contributing to the broader goal of poverty reduction and inclusive development in the region. Meanwhile, the Workers' Emergency Assistance Program will receive a certain amount to provide immediate relief and support the five hundred displaced of severely affected workers. Together, these initiatives aim to improve livelihood, promote peace, and foster long-term growth and stability in the region. As we remain true to our unwavering commitment for synergy, advancement, and mobilization for peace and development, the Ministry of Public Order and Safety has put in place programs that will attend to the specific needs of our people, one of which is Peacebuilding Initiatives, which has a budget of fifty-four point three million, will deal with the vulnerable sector of our society today, particularly the four hundred vulnerable combatants identified, identified which have been marred with conflict and struggles for so many years. This program serves to offer participants varying modalities of transformation and reintegration, and at the same time, fosters a durable peace and sustainable development and development of peaceful coexistence in the area of their return. It transcends numbers and funding, speaking to the reconstruction of shattered lives and trust, and instilling hope in the future generations. In the same breath, we also reinforce the Alternative Dispute Resolution, which has been allocated with two twenty-one point eight million. It seeks to enhance the community-based, non-judicial settlement of RIDO and other local disputes with targets of twenty-five RIDO cases settled through MPOS-led interventions and fifty-five RIDO settlements supported. Through this, we are building peaceful societies by equipping communities with the capacity to resolve disputes amicably, fostering trust, social cohesion, and reinforcing positive relationships. Similarly, the Ministry of Interior and Local Government, or MILG, has launched the Tulung ng Gubierng Nagmamalasakit, or TUGON, program with an allocated budget of sixty-four million. This initiative targets fifty reintegrated former combatants. TUGON is designed to reintegrate former combatants into society by addressing socioeconomic issues and providing interventions that allow them to attain a stable and satisfactory standard of life. More importantly, it ensures that these individuals are guided toward productive citizenship and are prevented from reverting to unlawful activities. In this way, TUGON reflects a compassion-driven and holistic approach to sustaining peace and promoting long-term security in the autonomous region. Together, these initiatives are more than just projects with budget and numbers. They represent our enduring dedication to protect our people, uplift communities, and secure a brighter, more peaceful future of the Bangsamoro. Every peso invested, every combatant reintegrated, and every conflict peacefully resolved brings us one step closer to a resilient and harmonious autonomous region where justice, unity, and peace prevail.
Mister Speaker, and the Honorable Member of the Parliament, under the broader framework of strengthening assistance to Mujahideen, the government's commitment to honoring the legacy of the Mujahideen and advancing their welfare, the Office of the Chief Minister has implemented the Strengthening Access to Living Assistance for Marginalized Bangsamoro. Salam. With a total budget allocation of ninety-nine, nine hundred, nine hundred ninety-two point three million, targeting thirteen thousand beneficiaries granted financial assistance, we seek to improve the socioeconomic conditions of our Mujahideen brothers and their families, ensuring that they are not left behind in our journey towards a peaceful and prosperous Bangsamoro. Alongside this, the Promotion of Well-being and Financial Stability for Senior Citizens and Disabled Bangsamoro Mujahideen Program, with a total allocation of eight hundred seventy million point, eight hundred, eight hundred seventy point two million, is vital initiative aimed at honoring, supporting senior citizens, and permanently disabled Mujahideen. Who actively participate in the Bangsamoro struggle under the Moro Islamic Liberation Front and the Moro National Liberation Front. The program provides both financial assistance and institutional support to help improve their quality of life and uphold their dignity in later years. A total of ten thousand qualified beneficiaries are set to receive a monthly cost allowance of at least seven thousand. In recognition to their invaluable contribution, in pursuit of peace, justice, and self-determination in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region, in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region, a strong administration for a meaningful BARM's guiding concept that embodies the government's unwavering dedication to response to expansive and people-centered governance. In the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region Muslim Indanaw, true governance entails transforming resources into concrete services, services that improve lives, particularly for those on the margins of society. It goes beyond laws and institutional framework. The Office of the Chief Minister's Tulung, alay sa Bangsamoro ng Angailangan, Tabaan program is a tangible illustration of this goal. The Bangsamoro people who are most in need, those who are impoverished, displaced by conflict, or affected by natural resources, will receive immediate direct assistance from Taba, which has been allocated one billion pesos and is a testament to compassionate governance. The program will provide a range of support, including livelihood assistance for the two thousand five hundred seventy individuals and for assistance for two hundred fifty-nine thousand six hundred individuals, to ensure that no families left behind during times of crisis. This initiative simplifies how good governance, when anchored on service, accountability, and compassion, can truly make a difference in people's lives. It is true, programs like Tabaan, that the regional government turns into vision of a meaningful BARM into reality, building a stronger, more resilient, and more inclusive community for all. As we strengthen our governance and justice system, the Bangsamoro government has earmarked a total of three thirty point thirty-six million to further enhance the region's judiciary comprising of both regular Sharia courts and operating across the Bangsamoro. As part of this allocation, the trial court and municipal trial courts will receive the annual allocation of three hundred sixty thousand and two hundred forty thousand respectively, while the Sharia courts and Sharia circuit courts will receive allocated an annual amount of six hundred thousand and four hundred eighty thousand respectively. Of your total budget, nineteen point sixty-eight million is dedicated to Sharia courts and ten million, ten point sixty-eight million to regular courts, underscoring the Bangsamoro government's recognition of the indispensable rule of judiciary, particularly the Sharia courts, in safeguarding justice, promoting civility, and ensuring accessible legal remedies throughout the region. In line with our vision of a responsive and people-centered administration, we continue to fortify our institution, including our local executive governance. Through the Salamat Excellence Award for Leadership Act of twenty twenty-five, we reinforce this commitment with institutionalization of this recognition program that honors exemplary leadership. The groundbreaking feature of this measure is the establishment of the SEAL Endowment Fund, for which we have allotted three hundred million pesos to ensure its fiscal sustainability. We have likewise reached another milestone in supporting our religious obligation as part of the Muslim Ummah. In September twenty twenty-five, the National Commission on Muslim Filipinos, together with the Bangsamoro Pilgrimage Authority, signed a memorandum of agreement on the Administration and Management of Hajj Mission starting in twenty twenty-six. This agreement enables the BPA to actively participate in facilitating the Hajj, not only for Muslims in our region, but also for the broader Muslim population across the country. Furthermore, for twenty twenty-six, we have doubled the budget for the BPS Hajj San Umrah program, increasing the number of former combatants to five hundred, up from one hundred fifty in the previous year, and allocating an amount of two hundred million for the twenty twenty-six. In remembering the struggles and triumphs leading to the undying hopes of our people, the Bangsamoro spirit gives us resilience in the people's shared vision. The blend allows us to approach the year twenty twenty-six with powerful administration. However, the road ahead does bring in its own share of challenges to tackle. Bearing the dignity of every Bangsamoro and defending it requires nurturing the hopes and values weighed by the virtue of undertaking that have been uncomplished in the past. With the guidance of moral governance, and a lot still remains to be accomplished, yet the tone hangs in the balance. Embracing united perseverance of all the Bangsamoro is imperative to attain all virtues in tomorrow's that await. With utmost humility and sense of responsibility, I share with you the continuous supports and progress that we have achieved through the collaborative work of our offices and ministers. These are not only plans and figures, but unified vision of Bangsamoro that lives in peace, dignity, and inclusive development. Behind every program we undertake and every piece spent are the people we serve. their needs, aspirations, and future. This budget is not, is not a financial paper. It is a declaration of our priorities and undertaking to serve the integrity and accountability. Ito ay nagpapatunay na bawat sentimo para bawat sentimo'y Bangsamoro ang sentro.
So itong mga ni rin barangay, nandito sila pata, ah patawid, galing, muntay, balong, tong dalawang ano, barangay lang dito sa medyo dito banda. So dito ang exist nila para papu, magkasakay sila ng pambot papuntang matabato. Lalong-lalo na ngayon, dami, natapos nitong tulay, na pwede na sila magkagya. So maraming-maraming ano, ah kabutihan ang nakakabuti ko dito sa ating ano tulay.
Where, tabi ka tara ng kapiaman, di di, inaalaga saan, kegemu.
As pasakudan na pagkatwak, pagjinyulakudan, miyikapya, kana na karsadan, mapasalamata ku sa baleng katina guam sa karsaday de panamenyang unap.
Ah malaking-malaking tulong talaga ang ginigay nila sa amin dito. Kasi dati, ang kuwan namin dito, kung nagbabaha, konti lang baha, pag-ulan, automatic talaga na ano na, baha nga talaga dito. So ang income namin dito gaya ng mga pamoy, hindi na nakukuha ng ano maayos. Sa ngayon, sa tulong ng BARM, malaking tulong 'yung flood control na binigyan nila sa amin dito, sa Pantagdil, sir. Ito kasi malaki talaga 'yung natulong sa barangaynan. Ito, sir, ang situation ngayon, nakikita, 'yung ano result. 'Yung mga bahay dito, hindi na talaga naabutan ng baka dito. Hindi gaya noon talaga na konting pagbaha, automatic talaga na hindi, hindi na talaga maganda. Hanggang dito 'yung tubig, hanggang dito. O, minsan, ito 'yung mga babahayan natin dito, 'yung community natin, dun na pupunta sa barangay. Gawain ng ano, pero ngayon, sa tulong ng government, ng BARM, ito, flood control, ah yun, ah wala na 'yung baha na ganun ang kalaki.
Maraming-maraming salamat sa pagbibigay na ng gymnasium na ito. Ah kung hindi tayo sa inyo, ay hindi kami magkaroon ng ganito kaganda, ganito kaispisius na gymnasium, na ang natutulungan ay hindi lamang mga estudyante namin, kung hindi, patirin 'yung community, community like barangay labo-labo. Kasi kung meron sila mga programa, ay dito sila nagkakandak na mga programa nila. Kasi ah napakaiportati ng gymnasium na ito, at tulad ng mga estudyante namin na nagagamit ang gym na ito, then they were able to explore their hidden potentialities in such a way that they will become effective member of the society where they belong.
Dati po, sobrang lungkot lang isipin na kapag nagkakandak po 'yung school namin ng intramurals, nagiging, ah nakakapagpaalam pa po muna kami sa aming mga butihing LGU and especially sa major po namin, na kung maari po ba na tiramin namin saglit 'yung municipal gym. Kasi sadly, ah 'yung school namin dati is wala pang gymnasium and parang ang hirap din, ang hirap ng buhay namin dati na ah kapag nagpa-practice kami pag may upcoming event, is talangan naming magbilad sa arawan.
Skater to the athletic needs of our school. Then we can concentrate on the training, simply because rain or shine, ah we can continue the training of our athletes. Then, as a result, we manage to send our athletes to the last palarong pambansa and had it that been for this gymnasium.
Ah also member din po ako ng food sale, I am athlete of Magindanao National High School and sad to say na indoor 'yung food sale na event and dati wala pa kaming gym, so talangan po talaga naming magbilad sa arawan. And sobrang thankful po namin na nagkaroon ng opportunity sa school namin na magbi, mabigyan kami ng ganito kagandang project which is ang gym na galing sa BARM and sana po patuloy niyo pong suportahan edukasyon sa bawat mga batang Bangsamoro.
Sa assistance po ng community ay ah malaking tulong po sa amin, sa ah community ng Ligawasan na halos ah buwan-buwan na binabaha po kami dito sa Ligawasan, ay agad po silang nag-responde po ang ah region ng BARM na para matulungan po ang community ng Ligawasan po.
Kuy tauspusog nagpapasalamat sa BARM dahil mula po nung ah nag, ano na ang BARM is hindi na po kami nakakatanggap ng bigas na NFA, ah dig twenty-five kilos po may weed groceries. Ah at saka meron pa po ano, may mga ayuda po. Minsan nakatanggap din kami dito ng ano ah five K, ah sumunod po doon. Ah may natanggap din po ako na thirty K pang-repete po doon sa bahay namin. Dahil 'yung bahay po namin, sa tutulang, maliit lang po 'yung bahay namin sa akong hindi. At saka 'yung daon niyo, kaya ako tauspusog ako nagpapasalamat sa BARM kasi ngayon, 'yung mapundang bahay na kami is yero na, tapos hardy fix na po 'yung hindi. Gayun po 'yung binili ko, kasi yun po 'yung pinakasya pera na thirty K na binigay po ng MSD BARM sa amin. So kala po nabawas po sa thirty K, binibinili po doon sa lahat ng mga materialis na pinatayo po sa bahay. Kaya yun po, marami pong salamat.
Ah sana napatuloy-tuloy, so kapag suportos tal kami, ka mas laban na liniyupor po kasi sa kami, na inanggang kami pa na MSD sa Walay. Inanggang kami sa thirty thousand para ipambale nami, katanabusong MSD, BARM na makalat kami sa nanam, kabagulan ang kami, tapos walay nami na makagil ka ba na, maluben sa mga pangawidin. Nakabaybangis sukurang po to sal, MSD BARM, na na nakaumbal kami sa Walay. Alhamdulillah. Ah subranabanal sa BARM, subra sa MSD, ka nakabuhay kami sa Walay. Yata mani masukha na, dapat mas pasa di balanin, yata pag sukuran na walay nami ah parang palas sa di pinawalay, uay na, baka jabar kami kapila ginawa, hindi kami pakagaga pambale. Ang sukutan olak tayo. Ah subranabanal, subranabanal sa BARM, sa government. Sana tuloy-tuloy po ang tulong niyo sa akin, subran, subranabanal.
Subran BARM!
Mister Speaker, today diligence official of the Bangsamoro government, thank you for your relentless hard work. To the Bangsamoro people, this is your government and this is your budget. Let us face the future with twenty twenty-six and beyond, beyond. In mind, let us go forward together, united in purpose, with an unrelenting commitment to serve every community. In moving ahead, let us reflect on the words of the Allah, mighty Allah, that Allah jina jahadu pinalanahianum suholanak. And those who strive for us will surely guide them to our ways. With this, let us remain focused on our duties, cohesive towards our objectives, and unwavering in our resolve to advance towards a brighter future for the Bangsa-Moro people. We ask Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, to grant us success in what benefits the Ummah and the nations and what serves our noble people. Mister Speaker, honorable members of the Bangsamoro Parliament, the deputy speakers, and all the officials of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Parliament, as we move forward to deliberate on the budget proposed, budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, I humbly seek your continued support in ensuring successful budgets and full implementation in the hope that it will help turn the Bangsamoro government plans into a lasting progress that secures a peaceful and prosperous future for the Bangsamoro. Wabillahi taufik walidahay, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi warahmatullah.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chief Minister. So clear up, blue leader.
Honorable Speaker, we will, at this point, we will allow the Honorable Chief Minister to submit the budget bill to the speaker. At this point, may I request one minute suspension?
So the session is suspended.
Honorable-
Session resumed. Floor leader, thank you, Presiding Officer. So, one minute's suspension. Session suspended for one minute. There is a motion to amend the order of business which we started. Do I hear any second? Motion is accepted. Do I any objection? Hearing none, the same is approved.
Later, we will also move for the amendment to allow affirmation of some committee memberships in some committees that I will be mentioning later. In the meantime, may Honorable Presiding Officer, Deputy Speaker Roselorena, may this representation request that the secretariat do the first reading of Parliament Bill 210 on the budget bill.
The secretariat is directed to read Parliamentary Bill 210, its title and all its authors. Parliament Bill Number 410 entitled "An Act Appropriating Funds for Cooperation of the Bangsa-Moro Government from January 1 to December 31, 2026," and for other purposes. Author, the government of the day.
Floor leader. Yes, thank you, Presiding Officer. At this point, I respectfully move to affirm certain changes in our committees. For Committee on Rules, to affirm the membership of MP Buchmalang to replace then-MP Paisalin Tagu, who is now MSU president.
So, there is a motion to affirm. It has been seconded. Do I hear any objection? The affirmation of...
MP Buchmalang.
MP Buchmalang to substitute...
Paisalin Tagu.
By Paisalin Tagu, the committee on Rules is hereby affirmed by the Parliament.
Also, Presiding Officer, Honorable Presiding Officer, respectfully moving to affirm the Honorable MP Tomanda Antok to be member of the Committee on Local Government, Vice Benjamin T. Loong.
There is a motion to affirm the nomination of MP Antok Vice MP Benzoong to the Committee on Local Government. Do I hear any second? Shall be seconded. Do I hear any objection? Hearing none, the same is affirmed.
As a consequence of that change, Honorable Presiding Officer, I therefore move that Benjamin T. Loong, Honorable Member of the Parliament, be affirmed as member of the Committee on Ways and Means.
There is a motion to affirm the nomination of MP Benjamin Loong to the Committee on Ways and Means. Do I hear any second? It has been seconded. Do I any objection? The nomination of MP Benjamin Loong to the Committee on Ways and Means is affirmed.
At this juncture, Honorable Presiding Officer, I will move for the affirmation of Hatimil Hassan, Honorable Member of Parliament, Tuk Kafar Vice Tomanda Antok and Honorable Tomanda Antok to be affirmed as the member of Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, Vice Hatimil Hassan.
There is a nomination to that MP Tomanda Antok be affirmed as member of the Committee on Finance and MP Hatimil Hassan as member of Committee of Kafar. Do I hear any second? It has been seconded. Do I hear any objection? Hearing none, the appointment of MP Benjamin Loong of MP Antok to the Committee of Finance and MP Hatimil Hassan to Kafar is affirmed.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. At this point, early this afternoon, we started with the... We continued with the interpolation on the Bangsa-Moro Labor and Employment Code with the Chairman, the Honorable Alan Pagayaw, responding to the interpolations of the Deputy Speaker, Honorable Don Mustafa Tiloong, and therefore, I move that they be recognized to continue with the proceedings of this Parliament.
May we call on the Chairman of the Committee on Labor, Chairman Alan Pagayaw to return back to the floor and MP Deputy Speaker Don Mustafa Loong to continue the interrogation which they started earlier. Please proceed.
Maramis... Maramis salamat, Mr. Speaker, floor leader. Mabilis lang po. Dun po sa section 105, Respect for Religious and Cultural Clothing, pwede ba natin lagyan ng provision doon that the mole shall issue implementing rules sa pag-implement nitong aspeto ng pag-respect ng clothing sa work environment?
Yes, agree, Mr. Speaker.
Sa aspeto naman, section 106, prayer space, bagabat sinabi nito na dapat hindi maprohibit 'yung mga empleyado, pero walang nakalagay ng mga number. Pwede kaya maglagay tayo ng numero? Halimbawa, kung sa bawat 20 na empleyado, baka naman pwedeng mag-designate na, shall endeavor to designate a prayer space.
Agree, Mr. Speaker. Please submit to the suggestion of the Honorable MP Loong.
With all due respect, from the floor, the interpolation shall continue, but the proposals which has been accepted should be introduced in the deputy document.
Yes, this... Yes, Mr. Speaker, this formed an interpolation with already some idea as to the ways forward. Etong prayer break po na 60 minutes, eto ba halimbawa during Fridays, ibig sabihin ang empleyado ay pwede ng pumasok ng alas 2, at yun ba ay ibig sabihin niya ay meron siyang sweldo? O dapat mag-usap 'yung employer at employee? Sa prayer break during the holiday, which I would assume is a Friday, and when you say 60 minutes, is it 12 to 1, which is already not paid and already a break? Or does it mean that on Fridays, private employees can opt to go to work at 2:00 PM? And the question is, is it paid or is it not paid?
Mr. Speaker, the break must be at least 60 minutes uninterrupted, but the timing may be coordinated to suit operational needs. This section only mandates one uninterrupted 60-minute break for the holiday. After, other breaks depend on workplace policies.
Mr. Speaker, may sweldo po ba siya sa 60 minutes na nag-break dito? Or walang ang sweldo?
According to the principal author, may sweldo siya.
So, baka naman po maglagay tayo ng provision, kasi hindi po siya clear dito. At saka, baka kailangan maglagay rin tayo ng provision na dapat pag-usapan ng empleyado at saka ng employer. Dun naman po sa pilgrimage leave, baka naman po, kasi walang nakalagay dito kung kailan niya sasabihin. Baka sasabihin niya mga isang buwan lang. Baka kailangan maglagay tayo ng... Maybe siguro dapat at least two months na dapat ma-advice 'yung employer, which I reserve to do so in the period of amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. We will consider that suggestion, Mr. Speaker.
Dun naman po sa minimum wage, ang Bangsa-Moro, well, ang mole, will establish minimum wage. Ibig sabihin po ba nun, meron tayong Bangsa-Moro Tripartite Wages and Productivity Board that will determine that in compliance to the tripartite principle of having the government, the labor and the employer dialogue to provide the minimum wage?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, the Bangsa-Moro Productivity and Wage Board is already existing in the structure of the Ministry of Labor and Employment.
Sa section 30 naman po, equal compensation. Equal pay for equal work, kasi sinabi natin dito na mag-hire tayo ng differently-abled persons. Pwede ba natin ilagay sa provision na yun na dapat equal payment kahit nag-hire tayo ng differently-abled person?
Actually, Mr. Speaker, the intent of the break is equal payment to even employment of different-abled persons. They have to receive same salaries, wages as received by the other employees.
Pinakahuling tanong po sa mandatory quota for differently-abled persons. Sinabi rito that for every 100 employees, we encourage to reserve at least one. Pwede ba natin itong term na ito gawing mandatory that employees shall mandatorily reserve at least one for differently-able, for every 100 employees?
Ah, yes, Mr. Speaker. Actually, during the discussion with the committee, there are suggestions that it will be mandatory, but fortunately, ang naging agreement ng committee is... Uh, optional?
Encourage lang po.
Encourage, encourage. But we will, ano, we will... Accordingly, there are some certain laws or provisions of law might be violated, but nevertheless, Mr. Speakers, you have to consider that again. We will look at the... We might be placing that in the... Look at the policy of an employer. It might be placed or incorporated in the CBA.
Mr. Speaker, I will just forward the formal proposed amendments for comment of the chairperson and the principal sponsor. And I thank the chairperson and the principal sponsor for replying to my queries as well as the floor leader and the speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, the Slone. Okay, floor leader.
Honorable Presiding Officer, I thank the Honorable Deputy Speaker Don Long for his manifestation. Likewise, reiterating this for the other interpolators, should they have amendments to submit their proposed amendments ahead of our next scheduled session? At this point, Honorable Presiding Officer, respectfully moving that the Honorable Gentleman from Basilan, Abrar Hataman MP, be recognized for his interpolation.
The Benjamin of the Parliament and the Gentleman from Basilan is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, assalamualaikum wr wb. Mr. Speaker, bago po ako mag-proceed sa aking interpolation on the said Bangsa-Moro Labor and Employment Code, naais ko pong i commend, of course, ang ating committee chair headed by the Honorable Alan Dato Pagayaw and, of course, the Honorable proponents of the Bangsa-Moro Labor and Employment Code for introducing the significant legislative innovations, particularly, Mr. Speaker, on some of my concerned areas, that this Bangsa-Moro Labor and Employment Code provides safeguards for youth employment, working children, and, of course, workers in the informal sector, among others. This are hallmarks of a progressive Bangsa-Moro, Mr. Speaker, and on that, it advances the welfare of its workforce across the region. To start this, my interpolation, Mr. Speaker, can I ask the secretariat to flash the chapter 5 of the said code entitled "Workers and the Informal Economy"?
Secretariat, please flash section 5 as requested.
Chapter 5, Section 51, sorry.
Chapter 5, Section 51, requested. Secretariat, please flash it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Secretariat. Allow me to read the section 51 of the said code that says, "Employment Transition Assistance, or ETA, an informal sector worker, ISW, as defined in the preceding section, shall be entitled to an ETA of 2,000 pesos per month, maximum of two consecutive months, or until such time that he or she has found a gainful employment or whichever comes earlier, provided..." provided that the ISW is registered with Mole, aged 18 but not over 60 years of age, and not covered by the Social Security System or the SSS, or Government Service Insurance System or the GSIS, or not proceeding to the Pantawid Pamilyang Program or the 4-P assistance, Mole shall issue the necessary guidelines for the implementation of this assistance. With, um, with the red, um, Section 51 of the provision of the Chapter 5, Mr. Speaker, naais po nating itanong sa Honorable Proponent, ano po 'yung practical applications ng Employment Transition Assistance as enshrined in the Section 51 of this code?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Actually, itong section na ito, 'yung Employment Transition Assistance referring to, with respect to informal, uh, sector workers, referring to workers in the rural areas. For example, habal-habal, habal-habal siya, do nagka-taon nasira 'yung habal-habal niya, then he stops, oh, matigil siya maghabal-habal nasira, then balas yang ader sosok income. So, have to register with the Mole. Nasa isang habal-habal siya na kailangan niya ang trabaho. So, hindi mean while looking for an A job, mag-assistance si Mole ng 2,000 per month, the maximum of 2, for 2 months, for 2 months period? Kung nakakita siya ng trabaho before the expiration of the 2 months, may expire na rin 'yung 2 months, whichever, whichever comes earlier, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Speaker, but I think it would be better po na mas made fine po natin because, as stated on the Section 51, um, uh, an assistance of 2,000 pesos per month for a maximum of 2 consecutive months or until such time that he or she has found a gainful employment. Bakit po nating naitanong po to, Mr. Speaker? Because, um, as by definition of the Section 51, and if you notice on the Section 50 also of the said code, dinifine po nating an informal economy workers, ang habal-haba drivers, fishers, farmers, small-scale traders, street hawkers, vendors, tricycle drivers, seka drivers, or small motorized boat operators, self-employed artisans, tailors, and other service providers such as barbers and shoe shiners. Naitanong po natin to, Mr. Speaker, because based po sa wording ng Section 51, na para po bang, what do we seek, no? What is the legislative intent po nung batas na ito, ng exact provision po na ito? Do we seek to transition everyone that is mentioned on the Section 50 to a gainful employment? Uh, first question, Mr. Speaker, do we not consider this sa Bangsa Moro community po na gainful employment? Or would it be better, um, to also ask Mole, no, to regulate and do measures regarding this regulation po, pagdating po sa ating informal economy? Because, Mr. Speaker, um, in the Economic Issue, Economic Brief Issue Number 4, series of 2024, published by a ministry inside the Bangsa Moro Government, the MFBM, ang ating informal sector po, kasama po ang mga nasalistahan na ito, ay nagkaroon po ng profound impact on community stability as it offers income-generating opportunities for individuals excluded from the formal sector. Ibig sabihin po, iba po, iba, ibang mga kasama po sa definition ng informal economy ay mas kumikita po ng twice as much po ng isang regular wage earner employee. So I think it would be better if the Honorable Proponent of this bill would allow some recommendations and proposals po on the period of amendments, no?
Yes, definitely, we will allow some recommendations, but before that, Mr. Speaker, I, I will try to expand further my explanation. The, the ETA, the Employment Transition Assistance is a temporary aid mean to a bridge income loss during job transitions. It is not a long-term subsidy. In order to ensure that there is a temporary support for the informal settler workers, this is not a sway them, this is not to sway them from moving away from informal sector. It is a gainful employment. The gainful employment means does not pertain to having a formal employer, but having livelihood as a source of income again. You know, walang trabaho niya, magkaroon naman siya ng income.
Thank you for that, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I would be proposing some amendments po on during the amendment period. Uh, if I may continue on the second question, Mr. Speaker. Um, a few months back po, uh, there is, there was a statement by MP Liza Alamiya, no? A legal principle statement by MP Liza Alamiya that says that when we talk about decisions or when we create laws, no? Pag tayo po ay gagawa ng batas tungkol po sa ating mga kabataan, or when we create laws, provisions, or decisions regarding our children, we put the best interest of the children at the forefront. Um, this is a question pertaining to the Chapter 3 of the said code, um, Regulations on Working Children, uh, Secretariat, uh, if you can.
Secretariat, please flash as requested.
Yeah, on the Section 36 of the Chapter 3, Regulations on Working Children, there is, um, a provision where employment of children, children below 18 years of age shall not be employed anywhere, anywhere in farm except under the following conditions: A, when a child works directly under the sole responsibility of his or her parents or legal guardian, and where only member of his or her family are employed; Letter B, where a child's employment or participation in public entertainment or information through cinema, theater, radio, television, or other forms of media is essential. To proceed with the question, Mr. Speaker, bakit po nating naitanong, o bakit po gusto pong iclarify etong specific section at provision na po ito? Is because, um, we are well aware, no, Mr. Speaker, that there are a lot of working students in the Bangsa Moro region, especially in our communities, rural or, um, island communities man po 'yan, that are working, no, under the supervision of their parents. Um, I know, uh, sa pagkakaalam ko po, anchor din po ito sa ating national law, but then, um, may I ask po the Honorable Proponent, if there was a consideration for an inclusion of a monitoring, may it be, um, quarterly, semi-annual, or annual po, no? Uh, may monitoring mechanism po ba tayong i-lalagay po, no? Just to ensure, or the assessment, of course, of the child's welfare in their employment po?
Uh, I believe, Mr. Speaker, uh, if you have some proposals, the Honorable MP Ataman, if you have some proposal, we will consider it.
Uh, thank you for that, Mr. Speaker. Um, uh, same thing with what I said earlier po, um, we will be proposing some amendments po during the amendment period. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Honorable Proponent, and congratulations. So, thank you.
Thank you, MP Abrahataman, and for that, the water for interpolation, Mr. Floor Leader.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, again reminding the interpolator to submit, uh, their proposed amendments prior to our next session to the proponent. At this point, respectfully moving that the Honorable Nagib Sinarebo be recognized as the next interpolator. Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer.
MP Nagib Sinarebo is recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, and congratulations to the, um, um, Chair of the Committee on Labor, uh, for a very comprehensive report. Um, let me, let me preface my interpolation by saying that labor legislation is a very important piece of legislation. Labor is a very important component of economic development. In the same manner that capital, um, which drives the creation of jobs and works for constituents of a specific territory is equally important. The challenge, therefore, in labor legislation is the need to balance the interest of labor and capital. And because the only institution that is able to balance the same is the state, or in our case, our government, the regional government, and therefore, the regional government that now proposes to legislate on labor should take into account the needed balance between the protection of the rights of labor as well as the protection of the interest of those who own the capital. Uh, that I think should pervade the discussion of all the provisions of the proposed legislation now presented before this August Chamber. Um, of course, we are a sub-national entity, and therefore, uh, under our setup, there are national laws that are still made applicable uh, in the, in the region. Uh, while it is equally important to realize that there are certain powers granted the Bangsa Moro Government, uh, and in the enumeration, this one includes legislations on labor. Uh, the first question, therefore, that I, I would ask the distinguished, uh, sponsor is how different or how similar is the proposed legislation from that of the National Labor Code of the Philippines?
Mr. Speaker, the enactment of the Bangsa Moro Labor and Employment Code is necessary despite the existence of the Labor Code of the Philippines, the PD 442, because the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim Indanao has been granted exclusive legislative powers over labor employment and occupation under Article 5, Section 2 of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. The break is both similar and distinct from the National Labor Code, essentially 441, it is similar because it adapts, harmonize most of the national labor standards on wages, for example, the working hours benefits, labor relations, and dispute resolution. It is different because it localizes these provisions to the cultural, economic, and institutional realities of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim Indanao, consistent with the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, which grants the regions government, government power to legislate labor and employment occupation, Mr. Speaker.
So would the distinguished, uh, proponent agree that in reality, in, in relation to labor standards, meaning wages, um, conditions of employment, uh, and similar standards adopted at the national level are the same standards being proposed to be adopted in the region?
In some aspect, Mr. Speaker, we adopt the standard set by the national standard, but because that this break is a culture-based, uh, legislation, in some, like for example, 'yung the, the break for prayer, the and other, and other, uh, regionally-based custom and tradition, it is being incorporated in the break, which is not part of the, uh, National Labor Code of the Philippines, Mr. Speaker.
So we are attempting also to contextualize the proposed legislation, and this includes, for instance, inclusion of a prayer break. And under this code, are we proposing that the prayer break would still be considered uh, time spent for work and therefore paid?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Would the proponent agree that such a proposal would also impact productivity?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, in, in some aspect, Mr. Speaker.
Because we are lessening the number of working hours for workers, but we are also paying them, meaning capital would have to provide for payment, even if these are ours, not spent for work?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we agree in some aspect, Mr. Speaker.
Would the proponent also agree? And would it be correct to say that in the proposed legislation, we will be also honoring holidays that are very distinct to our culture?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, simaterupak, it is in this, uh, law, the Bangsa Moro Holidays Act.
And, of course, the proponents fully understand that under ordinary circumstances, when an, when a worker, uh, or, or, when a worker goes to work on a holiday, there are categories of holidays and a corresponding pay, like a double pay for certain holidays?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, simaterupak, that was provided, that is provided in the uh, proposed bill and including the guidelines set by the Mole. It's already existing in the Mole.
Thank you, proponent, uh, and, Mr. Speaker, if only to emphasize the need to balance the consequence of what are being legislated, you would need to understand that if a worker decides to work on a holiday, and because we are including region-specific holidays, we will be increasing the number of holidays. And if we do not work, we will be reducing productivity. If we decide to work, we will be charging double pay for certain holidays when a worker reports to work, and therefore, capital is impacted in this legislation. My question is, have we consulted, um, the owners of businesses or capitalists in this region? If they would fully agree to, one, the potential of a reduction of productivity, or in certain cases, if a worker decides to work, an increase in the pay for the same level of productivity as you would find in other regions that do not observe, one, other holidays that are specific to region, or breaks that are very specific to regions like prayer break?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, during the consultation with the different stakeholders of this bill, they, we have not received any, any, uh, disagreement with this proposed provisions of this code.
So even business owners, I would understand. I'm hoping we did the, the invitation with the intention of allowing them to attend, and not the perfractory issuance of an invitation where we do not intend them to attend.
Yeah, Mr., actually, Mr. Speaker, no position, even position paper or comment, we have not received.
You have not received?
No, we have not.
I would defer to the good faith of the proponents, but as a question of policy, if we are increasing expenditure for capital to invest business in the region because they will be forced to pay additional pay for extra holidays that you don't find in other parts of the country, or you're made to pay for certain breaks which are not observed in other parts of the country? Would the proponents agree that if these policies are adopted, there would be a negative reaction from potential investors incoming to the region because there would be additional expenses or lesser productivity because of the reduction of number of hours and number of days for workers to be rendering work for them?
Yes, I agree, Mr. Speaker, that's why, uh, this, uh, proposed code is compliant to labor standards. As they say, predictable labor standards provide investor with confidence in predictable return of their investment.
Yes, generally, an, an, an important consideration for business to come into a region is the predictability of certain rules. But I think it is also important to know that investors are making profit calculations for their investors. So if you are setting up a corporation, you have several people who wanted to invest in the business, your task as the manager of the business is to maximize profit for them. And therefore, part of your calculation would be, one, you try to minimize your expenses. And part of the effort to minimize expenses would be to secure terms and condition where payment to work rendered that translates into productivity is not so costly as to reduce the profit that you intend to gain from your business. Which is why I think it is important at this stage to make calculations already. For us, are we willing to set a policy that would potentially discourage investors from coming into the region simply because the cost of doing business because of the policies that we are adopting is relatively higher than doing business in other parts of the country? Would the proponents agree that there is a need to seriously consider these policies?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I seriously agree, Mr. Speaker. As a matter of fact, the breaks depend on the employer's policy, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Proponents. The other one that I wanted to explore with you, and I'm not saying I am opposed to what you're proposing, is that for a region like ours, it would be important to find a niche and to attract investments to come in because if you're looking at the statistics of the region, the biggest component of expenditure in the region is still public funds, meaning money coming out of government which is being spent in the region. That's the one driving the economy of the region. And if we continue in that manner, our region would continue to be highly dependent on public expenditure as a means of triggering economic development. Would the proponent agree that at some point, or even this early, it would be important to bring in private investments as an important contributor to driving the economy of the region?
Mr. Speaker, I definitely agree with your statement, Mr. Speaker. But, Mr. Speaker, for your information, the primary for the break is primarily designed to protect labor, but it does not disregard capital and investment?
Yes, and I think we all agree that we need a balance. And if we tilt the balance towards labor and social legislation, meaning increased government interference in the affairs of the private business, the corresponding impact of that would be, one, to discourage capital to come into the region, and to discourage investments to come into our region. And which is why it is important to make the right balance in terms of the policies that are emanating from the parliament or this government.
Actually, Mr. Speaker, if you listen to the people outside, they said that the roads construction is done. We need investors that provide employment for our people. Perhaps, Mr. Speaker, we can encourage investors through another code, maybe the Bangsamuro Investment Code? Perhaps that will address invitation to investors to come into the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Musliminnow and power capital?
It is an important, Mr. Speaker, it is an important component of encouraging capital to come in, like tax holidays and certain incentives that we can give through the investment code. But I think it is also important to realize that labor standards and labor relations is an important consideration for business to come in. In the same manner that essential infrastructure, just as roads, ports, airports are important for investments to come into the region because these are important to move people and goods produced or are needed as an important component of production in the region. So overall, we will have to look at packages for attracting investment, not just single policy or single legislation. It's a complete package for investments to come in. And which is why I am trying to engage the proponents in a mutual exploration of the impact of legislations, including legislations on labor, so that overall, we can see the bigger picture and what needs to be done in the region to push its development. So if we are looking at some of the legislations here that would discourage investments to come in, we may perhaps rethink some of the policies that we are establishing through the enactment of legislations like this one. That's just one of the areas that I am interested in. The other one that I think is important is legislations pertaining to overseas Filipino workers. Is it included in the proposed code?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, it is included in Title III, Title III, Regulations of Overseas Employment, Section 21.
And some of the proposed provisions of this would require, for instance, recruitment agency to apply for, what do we call it, permit?
Permit.
To operate in the region?
The Ministry of Labor and Employment is mandated to issue permit. Permit, if you have an existing permit before with the Department of Migrant Workers, you should apply accreditation with the MOLI before you can engage recruitment in the region.
And the fees required for these agencies to operate in the region is similar to the amount that is paid at the national level?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, actually, Mr. Speaker, there is already an existing BAH in the Bangsamuro Autonomy Act Number 19?
Yes.
Number 19 and Bangsamuro Autonomy Act Number 9?
Yes.
The BAH 9, an act regulating the recruitment in the regions, and the BAH 19, otherwise known as the Bangsamuro Overseas Workers Act. And that spelled out all the regulations involving the domestic workers, overseas workers, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, recruitment for overseas Filipino workers in the region. And we have already implemented that earlier legislation?
Yes, sir, I think that the law was enacted sometimes in 2022, I think, if I remember it right, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, and have we started collecting the necessary fees required under this legislation?
I believe so, Mr. Speaker. We have started, the MOLI started collecting the fees, Mr. Speaker.
So in effect...
But honestly, as of now, I have no data, honestly.
Yes, so in effect, we are requiring recruitment agencies to make payment at the national level for them to operate nationally, and at the same time, require them further to pay if they intend to operate at the region?
Fees for the accreditation of their business, as well as they must establish office within our region. If they want to engage recruitment in our region, they must establish office.
So we are not asking them to secure a license to operate because that's already given by the national?
Given by the national.
What we are requiring them to do is to secure an accreditation to operate in the region.
And to be issued by the Ministry of Labor and Employment?
Labor and employment. And the fees and charges being imposed is more or less similar to what you would require at the national level for the issuance of a license?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker, actually, the MOLI is authorized to decide on the appropriate fees to operationalize these provisions.
So in effect, this one looks like a double taxation, although this is not taxation because these are fees and charges. So this would look like, or at least similar to the concept of a double taxation, where you require certain individual to pay the same amount of the same collection imposed by different jurisdiction. This time, one at the national and the other at the regional.
Actually, Mr. Speaker, we are not collecting permit fees, but what we are collecting is an accreditation.
Yes.
It may be another fee, but due to, this is another form of...
Payment.
Payment, another form of payment, Mr. Speaker.
And would the proponents agree that as a result of this double imposition, we are in effect increasing the cost of doing business in the Bangsamuro?
I think, Mr. Speaker, I... Would it be called double?
And we will, yeah, so if you make your calculations, if I have a license to recruit issued by the national government, and I go to Davao City, the Davao region does not impose an accreditation fee for me to do business for which I have already been issued a license by the national government. But if I decide to go to Cotabato City, the regional government would impose additional fees and charges for me to operate here, which in reality increases the cost of doing business for me?
But actually, it's a minimal amount just to operate, legalize your operation within the region.
Yeah, I think...
If I may say so, it's a negligible amount, I believe.
But, yeah. We both do not have the actual amount that is being collected, but two things are clear. One, it increases the cost of doing business in the region. Second, imposes additional burden to the operator because he will have to secure that, probably appear before an office or ask someone to secure the license for him, which is quite different from one who secures the license at the national level. He goes to Davao City, he begins his recruitment, he can do it, but in the region, he will have to face the MOLI and pay additional fees and charges. That's the, that in effect increases the cost of doing business.
Actually, that's the cost of doing business, but, Mr. Speaker, they are not meant to... This accreditation meant to ensure that only legitimate recruitment agencies operates within the Bangsamuro regions, just to legitimize their existence in the region.
I understand that, but there are enforcement agencies tasked by the national government to monitor that, and mechanisms have been established. So we are in effect putting additional checks and additional burden to operators if we impose these things. And if I may, I think it is clear that we are we are increasing the cost of doing business, and MP Ambulud II is suggesting to me we are in effect discouraging businesses to operate or invest in the region. That's just the, that's that's a clear direction or trajectory which is the consequence of a legislation that we are proposing. I'm not saying we do not do it at this stage. I'm just trying to demonstrate that certain policies that we adopt would have impact on the interest of business and capital to come into the region. And therefore, if we are to make a balance between what is truly needed in the region, do we need additional imposition so we can collect and increase revenue? Or do we encourage business, investments, and capital to come into the region by reducing the cost of doing business, imposing lesser costs, and therefore encouraging business to come in and therefore creating more work opportunities for our people? Second, increasing economic activity in the region by bringing in interested investments to come into the region. This balance, I think, should be seriously studied, and we need to look at how much money will we make if we impose these additional fees and charges? And how much money would be generated in the region if we encourage investments to come in? And opportunities for work and employment would be increased in the region so that we can, as the parliament, make an informed decision which policy we should support? Should it be... And this is following the famous work of Adam Smith in his seminal work in 1776 during the Industrial Revolution. And that is for government to take lesser participation in the affairs of business so that business comes in. Anyway, there is a natural regulatory instinct in business so that we can encourage business to come in, investments to come in, and there would be more economic activity. I think it is important for the proponents to demonstrate to our colleagues in the parliament how much money actually, in terms of practical translation, we collect from regulatory fees and the additional investments and the additional work generated because we encourage investments to come into the region?
So, Mr. Speaker, I agree with the statement of the Honorable MP Sinarimbo, and this representation is very much welcome and open to his suggestions. If you have any suggestions?
We will, Mr. Speaker, we will make some proposed amendments when we go into amendments related to the issue of OFWs. If...
One minute suspension. With the interpretation, the interpreter as well as the proponent are requested to go back to the restroom.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Moving into what I've, what I've already started, and this one pertains to OFWs. If you are regulating the recruitment and potentially, in a sense, the deployment of overseas Filipino workers in certain parts of the world, the nature of collecting fees and charges is for government to render services to the people where you actually made the collection. That is the only justification for fees and charges, because this is not in the exercise of police power. Or rather, this is not an exercise of taxation, but rather of police power. And therefore, you need to render services to the constituents where you collect the fees and charges. What is, what in particular are the services being proposed for OFWs from the collections we are making?
Actually, Mr. Speaker, it is not spelled out in this code, but depende rin po sa magiging guidelines na issue ng mole.
Nang mole.
As a matter of fact, I believe, honestly, Mr. Speaker, I have not read the full text of the BAH 9 and BAH 19, but I, I think so, it is embedded in the, this said to BAHs.
And so, so if we are collecting these fees and the deployment of workers are overseas, meaning outside the country, do we have a mechanism under this legislation on the monitoring and potentially provision of services to these workers outside of the country?
Uh, accordingly to the principal authors, so it, itong ko natin, ay wala, wala. It's been covered by the national consideration, it is, it's an, in, in other country.
So it would still be the labor attachee of the Department of Foreign Affairs that would continue to monitor and provide services to OFWs, even if we are collecting something?
Mr. Speaker, I move that the principal author of this bill be recognized.
The Honorable Ramisema, the principal author is recognized to assist the Chairman of the Committee on Labor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sa BAH 19, so meron tayong, I don't know, sa, uh, Department of Migrant Workers sa, nabataas, so meron tayong certain provisions, 24, yung coordination between the Department of Migrant Workers and the Ministry of Labor and Employment. So from there, so pagkaroon ng exchange of, eh, ta dun, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, so we are not, I, I would, would it be correct to say that we are not intending to deploy personnel of the Ministry of Labor to jurisdictions outside of the country to render service or monitor OFWs?
Mr. Speaker, dun sa BAH 19, meron tayong provision doon, which is supposedly, the Bangsa-Moro government pwede mag-stable this, ng, this, the days to the embassy, the Philippine Embassy in other countries. But unfortunately, Mr. Chair says hindi pa yun na-realize, Mr. Chair.
Yes, and, and part, I think, of the challenge there is the, the consideration for payment of the personnel deployed outside, because we will have to pay them in, in dollars, because the living standards in other countries are different from what we have in the country.
Yes, exactly, Mr. Speaker, because during the IGR, IGR, uh, IGR meeting, so nagpag-usapan niyo po yan, Mr. Chair, yung regarding that matter. But unfortunately, until now, hindi pa rin na-ecap yun, Mr. Chair.
Yes, so, so that's part of the challenge that we will have to address also, because this, in effect, this legislation is not just a legislation on labor, because it is also a codification of other earlier legislations pertaining to labor and social legislations. And, and therefore, even if it's not here, if we codify it, it will be made part of this code, because that's the very nature of codification, to bring together legislations of the same nature. And, and because of that, we may have to examine also that piece of legislation, Mr. Speaker.
With the indulgence of, uh, FP Nagibayat to ask some clarification relative to your... Are we, do we have representation in the OFW pan being managed by the Department of Migrant Workers? Or are we receiving pans from the OFW pans under the management of the, to provide services and benefits to our OFWs from the region? I just want to be clarified on that, if we have, because they might suspend the pan given to us if we have these collections or if we have this code. So I just want the clarification on that.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, according to the principal authors, wala na tayong natatanggap na pans.
Okay, thank you. You can proceed, uh, thank you, MP Nagib Sinarimbo for allowing me to...
Thank you, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, Mr. Speaker. The other question pertains to labor arbitration in the region. Are we also proposing, uh, an, an office that deals with arbitration between capital and labor in the, in the country or in the region?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we, we will be establishing the Bangsa-Moro Labor Conciliation and Arbitration Board, Mr. Speaker.
And as a result of the creation of this board, we will have labor arbiters?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And because we have labor arbiters who would take jurisdiction of cases involving capital and labor, we will also need to look at appeals and pathways, in essence, for cases, um, taken up by the labor arbiter. Where would it be appealed? Is that provided also in the code?
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, you, the decision of the BLCOM will be applicable in the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court under Rule 65 and 64, I think, Mr. Speaker.
So in addition to, so you have a labor arbitration, uh, office?
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
And you would field labor arbiters?
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
And instead of a National Labor Relations Committee, NLRC, you will have a board that would take jurisdiction of appeals coming from or originating from the labor arbiters?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the BLCOM, the establishment of BLCOM in the region generally replaces the National Labor Relation Commission of the National Government.
NLRC. And from the decision of a body that would replace NLRC, where would the decision be appealed to? Or if not, if it is by a special action, tertiary under Rule 65, where do we take the case?
To the Court of Appeals, Mr. Speaker.
Court of Appeals. By a Rule 64 and not 65?
By a Rule 65, when there is grave abuse of discretion, uh...
So in effect, it is not an appeal, it is a special civil action intended to question jurisdiction. Would that be correct, uh, proponents?
Pardon me, Miss, pardon me, Mr. Speaker, I'm not a lawyer, but, yeah. If, if no lawyers who will object to that, I will agree, Mr. Speaker.
Apologies. The, the reason I'm raising this, Mr. Speaker, is that we will be increasing the jurisdiction of the Court of Appeals, or in certain cases, the Supreme Court, if it is by a Rule 65. And I'm not sure if the parliament is vested power to determine jurisdiction for certain national courts created by the national government or whose rules are determined by a co-equal branch at the national level, like the Supreme Court. It may therefore be important to review very carefully the provisions pertaining to appeals or original actions by a Rule 65 in this legislation.
Again, with the indulgence of the, with the interpreter, I'd just like to ask, would it amend the NLRC law, creating the NLRC? Because we don't, we, we may not have the power to amend such a law, because it is an act of Congress. On the very beginning, even, even without questioning the jurisdiction, the Court of Appeals, just the law itself.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I, I believe we are not amending the law, creating the NLRC. What we are having here is the jurisdiction of the NLRC in the Bangsa-Moro Otomoos region is no longer applicable because of the creation of the Bangsa-Moro Labor Arbitration and Conciliation Board.
Because the jurisdiction of the NLRC is all throughout the country. So if we delimit the jurisdiction, that's an amount to an amendment of that law. With all due respect, that's my view from the chair. So anyway, you, I'd just like that to be considered in the light of our discussion so that we can take hold of the view on the particular issue. So proceed, FP Nagib Sinarimbo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, in, in reality, that's my final question to the proponents, because I worry, just, just like the, the speaker, on the implications of the legislation to national legislations or even rules already established by the Supreme Court. Not that I am not willing to fight it out, to assert jurisdiction, but it is important that we already know and foreshadow what would be the legal issues that we will confront if we proceed with the legislation. It is better that we are prepared, rather than we will just be surprised that part of what we have legislated in reality infringes upon the jurisdiction of the Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals, or in certain cases, powers exercised by the Congress of the Philippines. So it's just a way of reminding ourselves that we have to be prepared and that we should study the consequences of legislations proposed in the parliament. Uh, that is all, uh, Mr. Speaker, and thank you very much, uh, to the distinguished proponents.
Thank you, FP Nagib Sinarimbo, for that, uh, well, uh, carefully, uh, prepare, prepared interpolation and scrutiny of many of our legal maxims as, as incorporated in the said law proposal. Thank you, Mr. Proleader, what's your pleasure?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Two more short interpolations. Uh, Honorable Presiding Officer, at this point, may respectfully moving that the Honorable Deputy Speaker Bayutan Abatuan be recognized as the next...
The Iron Lady of the Parliament Deputy Speaker Bayutan is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, can I ask for one minute suspension for a call of need?
Okay, one minute suspension to allow the committee chair to exercise its right. Uh, DS Abatuan, so you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Would the good gentleman yield for some clarificatory questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, as a matter of fact, parang pareha tayo ng color, madam.
Gado. Gado. Magtatagalog ako kasi nabasa ko dun sa, ano, sa comments, sa comments. sa Facebook page. Sabi na, sana kung magtagalog kayo, maintindihan namin. So try natin para maintindihan tayo. After all, my objective here, ang objective ko po ay maintindihan kung ano itong ipapasa nating batas. Ano ang impact niya sa employer, sa employees, at sa mga upisina? Diba? Yan ang layunin ng isang batas. Okay. Unang-unah, and the question ay tinanong na, natanong na rin ang aking mga kasamaan, pero para maging specific lang. Alin sa more than 100 provisions?
286.
286 sections ng proposed na batas, ang wala sa National Labor Code.
Okay, Mr. Speaker, forgive me kung hindi ko kaya ito tagalogin. Kasi 'yung binabasa ko na batas, I...
Section lang, section lang 'yung title.
Okay, okay. Provisions of the Bangsa-Muro Labor and Employment Code, distinct with from the National Labor Code, which is PD442. Ito ang mga pagkakaiba nila. Maari, itong provision na ito ay wala sa National Labor Code of the Philippines. Unang-unah, Section 2, the purpose.
Pwede bang while we are talking about the section, i-block ng secretariat?
Secretariat, comply to the request, please plus 'yung section as they discuss.
Okay. Number 1, on the regional character and cultural basis of this code, number 1, Section 2, purpose. This code is purported to provide a framework for labor and employment that is responsive to the needs, ideals, aspirations, and reflective of the culture and tradition of the Bangsa-Muro. Bakit natin nasabi distinct features sa NLRC? No such cultural contextualization exists in the National Labor Code, which applies in formally nationwide. Itong provision na ito, dito lang makikita sa black na ito, Mr. Speaker. Second is Section 3, the scope. This act shall be applicable to all employers, employees, and other types of workers within the territorial jurisdiction of the Bangsa-Muro-otomo region and Muslim Mindanao. Ibig sabihin ito, this is only applicable to the regional territory of the Bangsa-Muro-otomo region, Mr. Speaker. Third, on the regional institutions and authorities. Number 1, the presence of the creation of the Bangsa-Muro Labor Conciliation and Arbitration Board.
Anong section na yan?
Book 4... Secretariat, kindly, ano?
Section.
Listasis, and Section 2040.
240.
248? 240, okay. Section 240, the Bangsa-Muro Labor Conciliation and Administration Board. A Bangsa-Muro Labor Conciliation and Arbitration Board is hereby established as the Conciliation and Arbitration Authority on all level and employment complaints or disputes not expected by law. It shall absorb and exercise all the conciliation mediation functions of the Bureau of Labor Relations Services, provided that the Bureau shall continue to use SENA on issues on matters within the jurisdiction of MOLI. The BLC shall be attached to MOLI for program and policy coordination. Also, one stop shop. Second, for the regional institution is the Bangsa-Muro Voluntary Arbitration and Training Council, a tripartite council.
Anong section?
Section 196. Section 196. Section 196, Bangsa-Muro Tripartite Industrial Peace Council. A tripartition in labor relation was adopted by the Bangsa-Muro government as a policy in labor relations. Toward this end, the Bangsa-Muro workers and employers shall, as far as practicable, be represented in the decision and policy-making bodies in the bar.
Okay.
The minister or his...
Di, okay na yan.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Another is Section 256.
256.
Section 256 is the Bangsa-Muro Voluntary Arbitration Tripartite Council, Obi Batsi. Another...
Ano ito? Voluntary Arbitration Tripartite Council.
Speaker.
At ang mga ito, bago ito, no? Bagong itatag...
Bago, bago, ito.
Sige, mamaya, may tanong ako diyan.
Okay, Mr. Speaker. Another section 10, the Bangsa-Muro Technical Vocational Innovation Technology and Interpreneurship Training Program, Section 10. Another provision is the Special Program for Employment of Bangsa-Muro Students and Youth, Section 11.
11.
Section 11. Ito 'yung may budget nag-ipresentan ni Chief Minister kanina.
Okay.
Another is the Bangsa-Muro Internship Development Program, Section 13.
13, internship.
13. Another one is the Employment Transition Assistance for Informal Sector Workers, Section 51.
51.
On the distinct policy and governance features of this code, the role-making authority, Section 6.
Section 6?
Section 6, Mr. Speaker.
Patras, huh? Role-making authority.
Another one is the mandatory review clause, Section 272. Requires review of the black every 5 years by the Bangsa-Muro Parliament.
Okay.
Another one is the prohibition of injunctions, Section 268.
Okay.
Another one is the supplementary clause, Section 273, which expressly states that the Labor Code of the Philippines and international labor standards apply only supplementary when no black provision exists.
Are you done?
Next is the inclusion of the Bangsa-Muro communities outside bar.
Section?
201F.
Next.
So that's all, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for highlighting the distinct features of this... Sabi ko nga, magtagalog ako. Distinct features ng ating Bangsa-Muro Labor Code. Ang sunod na katanungan ko, Mr. Speaker. Actually, ang nakikita ko na kakaiba, nawala sa Labor Code dito sa enumeration na ibinigay. Karamihan dito ay mga programang pinapatupad na ng MOLI, tama ba?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, tama. Tama po.
Sa makatwid, iban hindi natin ipasa itong panukalang batas na ito, meron na 'yung mga programa. Tama po ba?
Meron mga programa, madam, but it needs enhancement. Actually, one is enhancement of the laws, then another one is to institutionalize those programs.
And if hindi natin ipasa itong black, hindi ba ma-institutionalize itong mga programa na ito? And... Palagay ko, doon sa pinresent ng kagalang-galan na Chief Minister na budget kanina, ay napaloob na itong mga programa na ito. Ang katanungan ko, ano ang value-added ng pag-sasabatas ng mga programang ito? Magdodoble ba ang pondon ng mga programang ito? And kung magdodoble, ano 'yung trajectory ng programang ito? Kasi kung the moment we institutionalize this, that will be a forever appropriations, annual appropriations on the part of the government. But if it's a program, a program could be terminated at some point when it is no longer necessary. Tama po ba?
Yes, madam, tama. Pero ang definitely nawala sa MOLI, madam, is 'yung creation of BLC, the Bangsa-Muro Labor Arbitration and Conciliation Board. This is not present in the present structure of the law.
Sa makatwid, hindi natin pinag-uusapan 'yung problema sa programa. Ang pinag-uusapan natin at gusto niyong sagutan, tugunan ng batas na ito ay struktura, structure. Dahil unang-unah, may problema tayo sa arbitration, tama po ba?
Mr. Speaker, with the kind of intelligence of the honorable Deputy Speaker, may I move to recognize the principal author of this bill?
The Honorable Robyn Seba, the principal author of this bill is recognized.
Yes, maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. So actually, nung ma-establish na po ang Bangsa-Muro-otomo region and Muslim Mindanao, so ang DOLI po, DOLI national, ay wala na po siyang, nalist na po niya 'yung kanyang pangyarihan sa Bangsa-Muro-otomo region and Muslim Mindanao. So lahat po ng mga programa and 'yung mga policies, so nasa atin na po. That's why dun sa Section 10, sa Bangsa-Muro Labor and sa Bangsa-Muro Organic Law. So very specific po, 'yung binigay po na po sa atin ang power, at binigyan tayo ng power to expand the power na ng Bangsa-Muro government with regards on the labor. So that's why, ang ku natin meters, ni-expand natin 'yung power. Since the most of the labor, national labor code natin is, yun, 'yung most of the, is, 'yung Bangsa-Muro context, so malayo po doon sa national labor code natin. So that's why, nagkaroon po tayo ng instiba na dapat magkaroon tayo ng sariling Bangsa-Muro Labor and Employment Code para meron po tayong sariling guidelines para kung paano po i-regulate 'yung ating labor, then ano po 'yung mga programs. Very limited po 'yung programs na sa Ministry of Labor and Employment po.
Sige. Balikan ko po 'yung katanungan. Unang-unah, existing na 'yung mga programs, and they're being funded right now. Even if we pass or not pass this Labor Code, the programs are already funded, right? Ang gusto ko pong, Mr. Speaker, ang gusto ko pong i-drive out ay ano talaga ang value-added ng pagpasa ng Labor Code sa Bangsa-Muro-otomo region. Aside from, kasi ang pinakawala lang talaga na hindi naminigay ng national sa atin ay 'yung reconciliation and arbitration. Pero 'yung programa ay biniltin na natin. Though hindi binigay sa atin, pero nag-create tayo ng sarili natin, and it's already part of the regular programs and projects of the MOLI.
Yes.
No, kung ipasa natin itong panukalang batas na ito, ano pa, liban doon sa isang structure na yun, isang issue na yun, ang tutugunan ng panukalang batas na ito?
Mr. Speaker, Chairman of the Committee on Labor, may answer. Mr. Speaker, ang inclusion ng existing programs ng MOLI dito sa Bangsa-Muro Labor Code na ito, ang dahilan is institutionalize this program to give them a stronger legal foundation so that they cannot be easily discontinued, politicized, or left dependent on the discretion of the future administrations. By incorporating them in the code, masisikurado natin 'yung continuity, consistency, and funding support under the Regional Labor Policy Framework. Mr. Speaker.
Sige, yang pinag-usapan natin dito ay 1, 2, 3, 4, at least 5 programs, right? Okay. And isa sa mga programa na ito, 'yung assistance sa mga nawalan ng trabaho na hindi lalampas sa dalawang buwan. At ang budget ay 2,000, sa dalawang buwan. Sa isang buwan, so maximum of 4,000. Yun 'yung gusto nating institutionalize, tama ba yun?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Hindi ba? Pwede ko bang tanungin 'yung proponent, Mr. Speaker? Ano-ano ang ibang programa ng MOLI ngayon na hindi pa natutugunan itong problema na ito? Hindi ba't meron tayong tupad, akap, at iba't-iba pang programa?
And the former Minister of Labor, the author of the bill, respond to that question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, dalawa na po 'yung program na nilagay natin dun sa admin code. One is the Community Emergency Employment Program, the SIP program. The SIP program is 15 working days, yeah. It's minimum wage, so 'yung kanyang...
Nasa admin code dito? Nasan ito na program?
Actually, dito sa...
Ah, 'yung Section 13, SIP?
Yes.
Section 13.
Yeah. Then the Rural Workers Association. So the Rural Workers Association, merong 25,000 na bibigay ng MOLI as a startup capital dun sa mga association. But limited number lang 'yung mga komodet ng Ministry of Labor. So ang pinakakwan dito, Mr. Speaker, is to institutionalize itong mga programa nito.
Um, Mr. Speaker, wala po akong problema sa institutionalization. Pero ang medyo problema ko dito sa, isa sa programang ay gusto nating institutionalize ay medyo masyadong artipisyal, Mr. Speaker. At while it is for the poorest of the poor, pinagkasin natin to some level, which is 2,000, which might not be applicable 10 years from now. At gusto kong itanong sa proponent, ano ang basihan ng 2,000 at 2 buwan? Bakit tayo nakaarrive ng ganitong datos para matugunan 'yung isang problema na sinasabi niyong ito ay tugon sa mga problema nung informal workers, Mr. Speaker? Ano po 'yung batayan natin, bakit 2,000? 'Yung pang 2,000, 100 tahun ngayon, will it be not affected by the inflation? Baka 200 na lang 'yung valyon yan. I mean, um, baka hindi yun ano, kasi makita natin sa programa kanina doon sa report ng Chief Minister, impact 'yung sa mga bata na scholarship ay 8,000 'yung allowance. Tapos 'yung honorarium ng mga mudyahe din ay 6,000 at the minimum. So palagay ko may mga basihan, at gusto kong maintindihan ano 'yung basihan ng 2,000.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, kung the honorable Deputy Speaker is naliitan dito sa 2,000, we are open to amend for or increase.
Di, actually, hindi ako nalilitan, di ako nalalakihan. Ang problema ko lang is, um, baka nagpapaasa tayo ng ta... Ang, ang problema ko lang is, um, baka nagpapaasa tayo ng tao. Um, kasi bago ka makaabil sa mga ganitong programa, kailangan mo may ID, marami kang barangay clearance. Baka pag tapos ang pag comply nila, baka more than 2,000 'yung nagastos nila sa pag comply ng requirements. So, um, while, while it is true that we are helping the communities, baka doon na lang natin institutionalize sa regular programs na nan ginawa niyo na. Um, let's not create another program which is basically a very small program. And yet, ipangalandakan natin na, oh, kayo lahat, beneficiary kayo, um, makikinabang kayo sa programang ito dahil nagpasakamin ang batas na para sa inyo informal sectors, informal workers. Pero at the end of the day, ikacurse lang tayo ng tao dahil sabi nila, an, laki-laki naman 'yung inyong promotion, pero ang bibigay niyo pala 2,000, ang aming nagasto ay 2,500. Oh, see? So, I, I think, di ba may mga akap naman tayo? 'Yung akap ay 5,800. It, it doesn't, I mean, we, we can replicate the same program or encourage the national agency to partner with us rather than promoting another program which I think would just give some hope, false hope in that case because it doesn't answer the real problem. So, in due time, and maybe in the period of amendments, um, medyo wala ako dito. My proposal here, and for the record, I, um, I want to delete this specific section, uh, Mr. Speaker. So, just for the record, not, I don't want to help the informal workers, but if we cannot justify the rationale of putting this program, we'd rather incorporate the beneficiaries, the informal sector into the regular programs of the Mole rather than creating another new program, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, thank you very much, uh, Madam, the Honorable Madam Deputy Speaker. We will definitely consider your suggestions seriously.
Thank you very much, uh, and, um, dito sa inyong panukalang batas at, um, inidentipainin 'yung iba-iba pang programa at struktura na kailangang gawain at, uh, go, uh, i, i, i organize as an structure. Um, napagtanto niyo ba kung magkano 'yung magiging additional budget ng Mole sa pagpatupad ng mga programa at 'yung pag-organize ng structures na ginawa natin sa pamagitan ng proposed na batas?
Actually, Madam, Mr. Speaker, initial funds for this, uh, for this code is 30 million.
And that is, initial, initial appropriations? 30 million will be over and above the regular budget of the Mole?
Yes, over and above the budget of the Mole. As a matter of fact, we have acquired a certificate of availability of funds from the Ministry of, uh...
At, uh, 'yung 30 million po, saan natin gagamitin yun?
Uh, for PS and other operating expenses.
So maghaharay tayo ng mga tao?
So definitely, Madam, Mr. Speaker will be hiring, uh, peoples. But in, in our joint meeting with the CBFM, we agreed that the 30 million, uh, we, they approved the 30 million pesos initial funds for this code, then asked to the structure, especially the, uh, the NOSCA of the employees shall be further studied by the M, MABM.
And then they, for my problema, kasi binigyan niyo pang problema 'yung MFPM, pero kayo 'yung nag-propose. Uh, anyway, ang gusto ko sanang makita, hindi 'yung ilan 'yung tao 'yung ay hire natin, kundi ano 'yung papakinabangan ng mga taong ipagsirbihan natin?
Yes, uh-huh.
So 'yung programa, nasan 'yung programa dyan? Kasi 'yan ay, uh, mag-a-add lang tayo ng mga tao, pero ano 'yung gagawin ng mga tao na i-a-add natin? Magkano 'yung programa na i-implement nila?
Actually, Madam, ito, this only covers the creation of the BL-CAP, di bang sa Moro Labor Administration and Conciliation Board? Asked to the programs and projects, nasa Mole yan? Walang sariling programa ang BL-CAP?
Yeah, 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 I understand that. But you're saying that you want to institutionalize at least five programs. And when we say we institutionalize, institutionalize five programs, um, kung merong 300 million, uh, na allocation ngayon sa programs para sa Mole, will it cause another 300 million for the implementation of the new programs?
Hindi na, Madam, hindi na, hindi na, Mr. Speaker.
Mga magkano? Hindi natin nakwenta.
Di, actually, 'yung, 'yung mga program na sinasabi dito, si Mole na ang magprovide ng funds.
Eh, di po, eh, syempre pag ginawa natin dyan, sabihin ni Mole kay MFPM, eh, in-approved ng Parliament na meron kaming ganitong program, pundohan ninyo, magkano 'yung additional na pondong? Di ba? Kasi 'yan ang meaning eh, when we legislate, it will be translated later on into implementation. And when we implement, because we mentioned here five programs, how much will it cost for the government to implement these programs? Aside from, from funding the structure, the additional structure of the Mole? Sige, I'll part that, pag-aralan ninyo, kasi baka mas, ano alam niyo, natatakot na ako. Sa tutulang, create tayo ng, create ng structure, nung isang araw, nag-create tayo ng nutrition. Ngaya magka-create tayo ng another one. Pero ang sinabi ng BOL, 45% lang 'yung para sa PS. Oh, baka lugi na, lugi na, I, I mean, na, na exceed na tayo sa KOTA, so, kawawa.
With the endurance of the ES, I'm pato and I just like to put a, for purposes of, uh... You'll be organized in BL-CAP, remember? The Arbitration Board should come out with its rules. You have to train them. Then how much costing would it require that you have to put in mind? Because just at putting the arbitration, but they have to provide the rules that will govern the procedure. And they have to train, uh, the incoming arbitrators that will handle the, the job. So, uh, just a piece of advice, you have to put that into, compute that in terms of budget and money. Thank you, F.A., May I tell you?
Thank you, thank you. Concern po ako dahil, uh, magnabagjet na tayo at may maniningil, no? Dahil sinabatas natin, uh, Mr. Speaker. Um, marami akong gustong itanong, pero in the interest of time, I know that, uh, every one of us wants to go home already. Uh, 'yung Section 31, pwede bang masilip natin?
Section 31.
Ito po. Um, ito bang 1%? 1% dun sa, uh, employers or corporations with more, more than 100 employees? 'Yung 1% ba ay standard even sa national law?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, it is standard, hindi national.
Standard to?
Standard, 'yung 1%.
So hindi mo tatanong kung standard 'yan? Okay, okay lang ako, pero kung hindi ito ay bagong section, ita- itatanong ko anong basihan nung one? Kasi medyo malaki 'yung 1%, no?
Oo.
So what if, ano, hindi na kapag comply 'yung corporation, may sanctions ba?
Same standard ito, Madam.
Oh, sige, so... Well, national na 'yan. Eh, is it applicable sa bar? Ka tingin ninyo, 'yung national na 'yan? Kailangan 1% of, at least 100 na employees, differently-abled slot? Uh, big companies, wala pa naman tay big, no?
Grabe, oo.
Alamsam lang, wala na ako, mahirap doon magkuha ng ano. Hmm, sige, anyway. Okay, uh, Section 113. Ito lang 'yung medyo na, at na distraktlang imata ko nung, by reading the Bangsa Moro Economic Zone Authority. Uh, is it the, the office or the authority or is it the, uh, economic zones? Ang gine-rapor dyan. Baka ay economic zones, no? Kasi walang organizations na pinag-usapan dyan, sites 'yan eh. So, uh, maybe later on, kung pwedeng may mag-amend 'yan, kasi baka wala ako dito during the period of amendment, no? O, ma-miss, okay, thank you. Um...
Bangsa Moro Economic Zone?
Napansin ko lang 'yung, 'yung mga ginamit niyo na penal provisions, um, based on national standards ba yun? Kasi iba-iba sila eh. Based on national standards ba? Hindi ko tatanong kung ano, or gawa-gawa lang natin, treat natin na 500,000 to 1 million, or based on national to?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the penal provisions of the place are based on the national labor code.
Okay, sige, pabor, mas magandang claro. Um, and, um, itong labor code na ito, applicable sa non-government offices only? Sa private, hindi sa, hindi sa...
That includes, uh, public sector employment with respect to the, uh, union creation of union.
Ah, 'yung sa union lang?
Union lang. Asked to Human Resource Actions Matters, that remains to be under the Civil Service Code.
Civil Service, so at least claro yun, no, 'yung delineation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, kasi marami akong nakita na GSIS, pagibig, so medyo nalito ako.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, Mr. Speaker, with your respect to the Honorable, that is very clearly spelled out under Section 28, 27 to 28, title 4 of this code.
Okay, 'yung Section 121, 'yung during emergencies, lahat ng expenses are covered by the employee, employer, uh, standard ba 'yan?
1, 2, 1.
Standard din 'yan?
Yes, yes, po, Mr. Speaker.
Just to highlight, no, pag in terms of emergencies, lahat ng problema ay should be covered by the employers.
Employer, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, uh, Section 156, 'yung right to disconnect, um, national standard din to. Oh, so pwedeng hindi sumagot ng text ng boss, basta hindi work hours.
Work hours.
That's national. Pero sa government, hindi pwede, no?
Hindi pwede, oh, hindi pwede. Sa, sa one lang ito, Madam? Ang sakop lang ito, 'yung sa private sector workers.
'Yung registration fee na isang libo. Magkano sa ibang regions?
Hmm, standard?
Section 168.
168. Standard?
Nag-isang libo. Anong basis ng isang libo? Parehas sa ibang regions?
1,000 registration fee. Yes? Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker, parehas daw sa, this is a standard.
Sigurado kayo?
Sigurado ko.
It's on record, ah?
Oo.
Sige, hindi ko question kung, kung standard 'yan.
Yes.
Section 241. Uh, doon sa baba. Yang, there shall be a conciliator mediator assigned to each of the following subregions. Although, I would agree doon sa question of, uh, of the jurisdiction as propounded earlier. Pero ito is another question for me. Why do we put, uh, sa ano yun, kanina? One is South Central Mindanao, one in North Central Mindanao, and one in Southwestern Mindanao. Um, ganyan ba 'yung, parang wala man 'yan sa BOL, 'yung ganyan configuration?
Di parang nasa BOL ito, Mr. Speaker?
Ah, hindi pa, ganyan ba? Parang hindi ganyan.
Subregions natin?
No, I think, uh, with the endurance of the, of the ES of Patuan, there is the division of the region into area.
Yes.
For purposes of the Deputy Chief Minister.
But this one, are we following this? Can we be more specific that, that one, uh, conciliator mediator will be assigned in, uh, Tawi-Tawi and Basilan? The other will be for Lanau area and the other will be for Magindanao areas?
Di, di...
NSG?
Mr. Speaker, the South Central Mindanao, that covers Cotabato City, Magindanao del Sur, and Magindanao del Norte, including...
Can we be more specific on that?
Okay, okay, we will, ano, okay, thank you. We will, uh, we will specify.
Okay, sige.
It may be, it can, it can open close parenthesis. Or...
Di, diretsohin yun na, oh, okay.
For the North Central Mindanao, that covers, uh, Lanau del Sur and Marawi City. Then in Southwestern Mindanao, that covers Basilan and Tawi-Tawi, including...
Sige, last, last point ko na lang, Mr. Speaker. Um, and, uh, this is for the Secretariat. Um, ito na 'yung major ko na amendment.
Yeah, okay.
Bahala na kayo paano niya execute. This is for the Secretariat, uh, Mr. Chair. Because I've noticed 'yung languaging ng, ng bill can be further improved using legislative language or style. So, without offending the proponent, I, I suggest that we open, uh, and leave it to the Secretariat for further improvement. Because, tingnan niyo ha, Section 7 nga, mag-sample ako.
Okay, okay.
Section 7. Oh. Statement of objectives. Tapos, it is the policy of the Bangsa Moro Government? Si, parang hindi siya, hindi siya, ano, marami 'yan, marami 'yan. Uh, 26, 36, 49, and so many. So, I suggest that for the entirety of, uh, the, the bill,
Yes.
um, we will leave it to the Secretariat for legislative style.
Okay, okay.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. I hope that, uh, I've helped the committee and the proponent uh, in the improvement of the black. Thank you very much.
Thank you, DS, of Patuan. Thank you, Floor Leader. Honorable Presiding Officers, it's 6:00 PM, but I still feel the energy of the members of the Parliament. So, uh, with this, I respectfully move that the last but not the least, MP to interpolate, the Honorable Mahrop Kandao. Uh, MP Mahrop Kandao of Magindanao and Cotabato City is recognized.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Speaker, thank you, uh, Floor Leader. I am listed as the last in, uh, is, as the last to interpolate. Uh, I have actually listed 100 questions here, but I have reduced it to two, which are actually, uh, general in nature. I do not want to prolong the agony of the proponents by asking, uh, technical questions. In the course of the consultations with various stakeholders, may we respectfully inquire what were the general comments or key takeaways that emerged from those engagements? Additionally, may we also ask if the stakeholders consulted, expressed their support for the passage of this code? Dalawa lang yun.
Yes. The proponents can reply, respond to that query.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Can we allow the Secretariat to play a one-minute video, which I believe that will answer the question of the Honorable MP Kandao? The one played in the interaction of this, uh, committee report, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretariat is, uh, requesting... The secretariat is requested or directed to comply to the request of the Committee Chairman of Committee of Labor. Please play the video.
The Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao has a diverse culture and a growing workforce that drives economic development. Decades of armed conflict have left deep scars and labor market challenges. During the transition, the region developed its labor and employment policies.
I am the president of a worker union. In our workplace, we can freely organize, our rights respected, we can bargain to social dialogue, and our occupational safety and health are guaranteed. It is a positive work environment. But the situation is not the same for all the workers in the Bangsa Moro region. That's why we need a comprehensive labor code to ensure decent work, especially for workers who struggle to survive and support their family and to strengthen our collaboration.
As an employer operating a business in a conflict-sensitive area, the resolution of labor disputes presents significant challenges in the absence of a robust support mechanism. The deficiency of a labor code and established procedures frequently result in protracted disagreements, thereby adversely impacting the productivity of enterprises and the overall economic stability. There exists a critical need for a comprehensive labor code to enhance social dialogue, boost productivity, and sustain economic stability. Adapting and implementing the Bangsa Moro Labor and Employment Code is critical for lasting peace and sustainable development in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao. We ensure that voices were heard in consultations and dialogue, which started in 2021. We are thankful that the International Labor Organization has provided substantial support, technical expertise, and invaluable guidance throughout the journey.
The proposed Bangsa Moro Labor and Employment Code reflects our commitment to promote decent work and advance social justice.
Please welcome some important guests of our community, particularly representative from the International Labor Organization. Welcome to the Bangsa.
We in the Committee of Labor is committed to the swift passage of the labor code. Uh, this labor code has been adjudged by many as a modern labor code and recommendations that were provided by the International Labor Organization. That includes also the rural, uh, develop, rural workers. We in the BARM are labor-friendly and we want to address all concerns.
I was deeply honored to support the Bangsa Moro Labor and Employment Code. A powerful step towards dignity at work, fairness, and lasting peace. This journey began at standing through a careful assessment of the region's labor institutions. Together, we are building a stronger foundation for decent work, social justice, and hope for every worker and family in Bangsa Moro.
The Bangsa Moro Labor and Employment Code, with possible support from the International Labor Organization, will benefit the government, the workers, employers, and the whole BARM communities. It aims to create a fair, just, and balanced labor market by promoting decent work. This will help rebuild trust among people, strengthen social unity, and support economic recovery and long-term development.
We, the Committee on Labor and Employment, or GOLE, reaffirm our strong commitment to the swift passage of Bangsa Moro Labor and Employment Code. Our committee is united in assuring that every provision of the BL is upheld, fostering decent work and economic development. Together, we will work tirelessly to support and protect the rights of every worker and employer in the Bangsa Moro region.
A BL marks a new chapter for the Bangsa Moro. With moral governance, we turn peace into lasting progress, bringing fairness, dignity, and opportunity.
Mister Speaker, I hope the one-minute video answers the question of the Honorable MP Mahrop Kandaw, Mister Speaker.
Are you satisfied, Deputy Kandaw?
Yes, Mister Speaker, the video presentation speaks well for itself. I have no further question, Mister Speaker, Sir Floor Leader.
Thank you, Deputy Kandaw, for that very brief but very important question. Floor Leader?
Uh, thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. There being no more interpolators in the list, I therefore move for determination of the interpolation period. So move, uh, Honorable Presiding Officer.
There is a motion on the floor from the floor to terminate the period of interpolation and debate. Do I hear it second? Do I hear the objection? Hearing none, the same is approved, and therefore the period of interpolation is closed.
The period of amendment will be tackled in our session, uh, November 10 to 13 in Manila. Uh, taking also this opportunity to inform the members of the Parliament the schedule, the time and venue will be cascaded to all the members. But please expect, we'll have an earlier schedule to take advantage of our venue in Manila. Uh, we will also have a strat plan on 14 likewise in Manila as per instruction of our honorable speaker, the Honorable Muhammad Yakub. With that, I respectfully, due to lack of material time, I move to adjourn this session.
With that motion, session adjourned until notified for the next session.